Okay. Uh. I'm gonna call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting for Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Our first item of order is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic. For which it stands, on nation, God.
Justice.
That's it for.
All right. Thank you very much. Item two, a public speak, Kathy Palazzi.
Thank you. We have nothing this evening.
Okay, Diane Granier.
Uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of things. One is, um, I'm saddened to hear about the resignations of Jay Tuttle and Rick Kaufman. I think they served the town well, and it'll be a loss to see both of those guys leave. Um, also, I'd like to comment again, as I have often about, um, I'm delighted to be able to read the Town Administrator's Report. It's always attached to the meetings here. I think it provides me with a plethora of information that, uh, very easy to obtain, and I love seeing it, so I thank you for that. And the third thing is, um, I'm still sort of looking to, uh, see on your agenda at some point, an update on the burn app clock, um, where it is, and just an update, what happened to it. Um, it just sort of seems to have fallen off the the chart here, so someday, some, some point in time, if you could just update us on that, I'd appreciate that. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Okay. Tess Kraus.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, Haley Prado.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Kathy DeRozier.
All set. Thank you.
Marcy Minor.
I know. I see a lot going on tonight, so I won't spend any time coming. Thanks.
Okay. Um. Madalena.
Hello. Yes, my name's actually Aiden Ford. I couldn't figure out how to change the name on the Zoom. Um. I just wanted to propose a solicitor permit from Trinity Solar. Uh, I do know that in the past, you guys have gotten a lot of permits sent to you from Trinity Solar, but I would like to make sure you guys know that I would be replacing all of the past representatives that have been in Andover.
Okay, thank you. Valerie Bruno.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Uh, Janet Estefanitis. Janet, I'm not sure if your volume's up, or your speaker is working, or your microphone. Okay, Janet, we'll come back to you if you can figure that out. Kimberly Person.
I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Lee Anne Hutchinson.
Hi, I'm just wondering what the, um, direction is going to be for the Senior Center Advisory Committee Board. Um, you know, with, I had inquired last month, and it's my understanding that it was asked to be dissolved two or three months ago, and that that didn't take place. And in the meantime, we've had a change in senior center directors. So, um, I just wanted to, you know, and say that my interest is ongoing, and was wondering what the role is going to be um, with the interim and with a permanent replacement. Thank you.
All right, Joanne Hebert.
Hi, yes, I just have a quick comment. Um, I was surprised to see on the agenda tonight that there was a resignation from Jay Tuttle, who's the, you know, current Public Works Supervisor. I won't, you know, I know well enough that we shouldn't talk personnel issues, so I'm going to keep it very general, and what I hope to see in the future. It's just, you know, I'm usually a really good read of people and understand what they're trying to do, but this one kind of surprised me just because of the way, um, all of you were asked to consider either a one-year or a two-year contract, and it went back and forth. And, you know, every time that he came on, he spoke of really wanting to stay in Andover and needing that two-year contract, which I couldn't understand. I missed last month's meeting, where I know you all, um, resolved to change your mind and give him the two-year contract. So clearly, that was used as a bargaining chip somewhere. Um, so all I want to do, and I don't want to say anything bad about anyone. I appreciate all he did. He seems like everyone likes him as an employee, and he did a good job. But this gives you all a chance to rethink how you do contracts, what you want to put in them. Um, you know, definitely with a Public Works Supervisor, I hope that you put in some kind of health clause. That's what I see in all kinds of towns. That's what worried me about the two-year, not knowing he was going to resign, was just put in, you know, I know that usually they have to pass a physical and things of that nature, but yeah, just a little shocked. So looking forward to your conversation regarding that issue. Certainly, people are allowed to leave towns. That's not my thing. Nobody did anything wrong. I think you all did a great job in, in entertaining everything that he wanted. I feel a little bad on the other end, that I don't think the same was delivered to you. So, good luck in the future with that. Thank you.
Jay Tuttle. Okay, I'll get back to you, Jay. And I believe the other phone number is Dennis O'Brien.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry.
Okay. Jay, if you.
Yeah, I'm here too.
Okay, great. Jay, if you'd like to wait, or would you like to speak and respond? What would you like to do, Jay?
Uh, I'll wait. Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear. I just got on, so apologize. I'd be a little late.
No, that's good timing. Okay. Did I miss anyone else in public speak? Okay, a couple of issues. Uh, uh, Jeff Murray might maybe joining us later. He has a, uh, a baseball game to attend, which he should be attending, so that will be okay. Well, hopefully, he can catch up with us later in the meeting. And Eric had to step away for a personal issue. I'm not sure if he's back yet. Um. You're back? Okay. All right. So we're going to move on. Um, item three, additions and, uh, changes to the agenda. Do any of the board members, um, have any items that they would like to add or delete?
Yes, I would move to delete nine A, but the discussion of possible action on the draft audit report, uh, and so on, to do with the A F Capital Fund. We read this information less than 24 hours ahead, and we haven't had time to look at it and make any serious decisions yet. I really think we need to hold out until next month on that. So I moved that. We delete that. Nine A.
Okay, any other items? Carol, nothing. Scott, nothing.
Uh, I suppose also, we might want to add Trinity Solar, the approval of the new person for Trinity, since that wasn't on the agenda yet.
Yes, thank you very much.
We have an application for that, Eric?
Uh, not in the packet. There was one last month that you decided not to act on because we had signed already for four Trinity Solar employees in the last year.
Okay, uh, let's separate those out. We can add, we can add Trinity Solar to, uh, nine F, if it approves. So, give me one second.
Um. If I, if I may, I don't.
No.
May not.
You may not. Put yourself on mute, if you would. Thank you. Okay, that's not gonna work. Oh, it's not gonna work. Okay. Okay, so, um, does anyone want to second the deletion of nine A?
I'll second that, because did we even get a copy of the draft audit report that we're being asked to vote on with this?
Well, we're not being asked to vote on with it. That, that's.
Question and possible action.
Sure, but the possible action is to establish, to set a town meeting, to vote on that and approve it. It is not an issue of not wanting to approve it. It's an, it's an issue of what is the proper procedure according to our charter and according to state statute. That's all this is about.
Okay, but again, we didn't get a copy of the draft audit report. At least I didn't.
We did.
You did?
Yeah. Let me find the date for you. But regardless of that issue, if the draft audit wasn't received, I will get it to you, but I'm pretty sure that, um, it came to all of us. Sorry, I have to work around a couple of things. Eric, when did that go out? And I don't know if it went out from Mark Brinker, if it went out from you. I think it went out from you, Eric.
I'm looking.
So, on five thirteen, Eric sent that out. And Eric, did you not send it out to everybody? Or did it go out under the Board of Finance Special Meeting?
Did not appear to be seriously hurt. Still, it could have been a lot worse. And the image of militar.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't know off the top of my head what date I sent it. I thought I sent it to both, uh, boards and commissions. I'll look for it.
It actually doesn't appear to be that. It appears they sent it to myself, Mark Brinker, and Joanne Hebert. So Carol, you are a hundred percent correct. I will send it to you right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. And May. Scott Person. And Jeff Murray. Okay. So, back to the issue. The issue is not, listen, this is not about, um, not wanting to approve this. This is about doing it the correct way. And I requested an opinion from the town attorney. I spoke to the Board of Finance Chairperson, and I expressed my concerns, and we can vote on not having it there, but it is not a, this is not a negative. This is not an attempt to sit there and not put the money in the fund. This is an attempt to sit there and do it the correct way, because it is actually not even, uh, a Board of Selectmen issue to sit there and approve the money going into that. It is a town meeting, because that is our form of government, and that is the appropriate legislative authority, not the Board of Finance and not the Board of Selectmen. There's certain ways these things should be done, and we need to start doing these things correctly, because we've had a habit of not doing things in a correct manner and working together to do it according to what the appropriate procedures that have been outlined by either state statute or by the town charter. So.
Well, I still feel that we need to postpone the discussion on that, because we haven't had time to look through what we received from Dennis this morning. So that's why I put forward that motion.
I would rather not sit there and, well, we're going to just vote on it. So, uh, all those in favor of deleting item nine A from the agenda. All those in favor? If all those opposed? Okay, two-two. Uh, we'll discuss it at the time, so, uh, we will sit there and have a vote on whether we schedule a town meeting, and then we'll sit there and postpone it. So.
Can I just ask one question on that?
Sure.
Is this already approved by the Board of Finance to do this? Because this was an audit report ending fiscal year of twenty.
No, 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 Carol, it's not about the audit report. I'm not.
No, no, I understand, but was this transfer already?
We'll do it.
Authorized or approved or whatever, whether it's right or wrong, the procedure that it was done, I'm not.
We'll talk, we'll talk, we'll talk about it at nine eight, Carol, and, and just.
Nine eight, okay.
Deleted. So we'll talk about it at nine eight, and it'll just.
Okay.
Whether we get the action on it.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, so, um, the other item was to add nine F Trinity Solar, uh, permit application to the, uh, the agenda. Further discussion on nine F, adding nine F? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item four, Board and Commission Presentations. Uh, Eric, do we have any?
Uh, not that I know of.
Okay. Um, we'll move on to, uh, item five, which is, um, appointments.
Can I just add something to that? All of the Board and Commission terms expire June thirtieth of this year. There's a notice in the River East for any elector, and notices were sent out to the Board and Commission Chairs, um, just to poll their members to see who would like to continue to serve. So, we're going to be reappointing all boards and commissions, hopefully at our next month, because I know three of the commissions have sent in their reply with the members who want to continue. And we haven't received anything from the public that I'm aware of yet.
Okay, um. I, I understand that, and I'm in agreement with you, but on the Library Board, is it really?
The Library Board can appoint their own alternates. We, that's not under us. The Library has, the Board of Directors have the authority to reappoint. That authority is given to all boards and commissions to fill their vacancies by their membership, not us.
Okay. So. Are you sitting there saying that we don't need to sit there and just approve the Board of, the Library's Board's request?
Charter doesn't say that we have to approve anything. They have the authority. If they've appointed the alternates, they're alternates.
Well, they're actually replacing board members.
Okay, but if they've, if they've already voted them in, then they're in.
Okay. I have no problem, because I was just going to vote to approve. So, um, the one thing that I would like to sit there and say is, um, I'd like to thank Diane Granier for all her years of service on the Library Board. And, uh, you know, she's been a great asset to the community, and I really don't have any problem with any of the members of the Board, the Library Board, and what they're requesting. So, um, if it's not something we need to approve, then we won't need to take a vote on it. Um, we're going to move on to item six, resignations. We received two resignations in the last month. Jay Tuttle is, uh, the Director of Public Works, and, um, Ricky Kaufman is a senior transportation, as a driver for senior transportation. Um, Jay is here with us, and Jay, I, um, I did speak with you after receiving the resignation, and I did tell you that, um, I would hope that you would come to this meeting to sit there and just, uh, share with the Board the things that we should be considering as we move forward, uh, to replace the Director of Public Works.
Well, I thank you for reaching out, Jeff, and I'm assuming everybody got my, my letter.
Do we have an emergency? Okay.
That's not me.
I thought there was a tree down somewhere, Jay, and you had.
Oh, well, I had one the other night. Um, anyway.
Lake Road?
Uh, no, actually, it was Parker Bridge. So, uh, happened while I was up in New Hampshire. So, anyway, um, I if you. I'd like to share a little bit of time with you and a little bit of explanation of where I started, where, where, how I came to make this decision. Um. And, uh, allow me a few minutes of your time. When I first came on board almost five years ago, it was made clear to me by most everyone involved that you wanted to see our public works modernized and get up to speed to current standards, so we can better serve the town and its infrastructure. You wanted a plan, and I was up to the challenge. My day one, we first started by cleaning the facility, just so we could function somewhat efficiently, so we could do our day-to-day activities. Since then, we have made many incremental improvements to this facility every year, bringing it up to the standards of today and making it a facility that we can all be proud of. In the beginning, I couldn't even think about a plan until I had some time to evaluate the town's infrastructure and what resources we have. There are a lot of fires to put out, and some still remain. I sometimes wonder if anyone remembers what condition the roads were in when I first started. This department had run so lean and unsupported for so many years, that it was going to take quite some time to get caught up to where things are manageable. I had a lot of work ahead of me. With the amount of funding allocated, we had to rethink the past and how things were going to be done. Political individuals started coming to me in person, calling me on the phone to express what they would like to see or have done with the department. Individuals would tell me, don't worry about funding, we'll get it for you. Some even went so far as if a certain someone gives you a hard time, you come to me. Don't worry about that person, I'll handle that. I soon discovered how the political environment was going to be. I decided then not to let that influence me, because even though there were differences of opinion, it was okay. Because at the time, this department was being supported by both sides of the aisle, and I could deal with that. Both parties could see that change needed to happen. I just had to listen, understand, find a way to make it work while retaining a functionality that would best serve my crew, this department, and the town's needs as a whole. First of my goals were to, to get the roads back into shape and shed water, so the surface drainage could again collect the watershed as it was designed to go, as it was designed to go in the first place, to get the drainage swales and ditches cleared, cleaned and reshaped to move water away from our roads, get the travelability back and make them safer to drive on. I believe we have mostly accomplished that. At, at the same time, we had to start addressing town equipment and how we were going to continue to modernize the department. At that time, a multi-year purchasing plan was already in place, and I was asked to review. I changed it up some, most, mostly thinking that everything was on point. I added some items thinking this would be beneficial to the department, making us more efficient, while allowing us to do more for the town. And it was accepted. I presented a new plan. I presented the new plan, tweaking the old one, and was accepted by all the boards, but at the same time, keeping in mind, telling everyone, keeping in mind, things can happen such as a breakdown or wanting to save dollars to purchase now versus next year. Sometimes change to a well-thought-out plan can be in the town's best interests. In regard to equipment, I believe this department to be in the best shape it has been, been in for a long time. But this is where the political climate first took a turn for me and changed my outlook for the future. When presentations are made, discussed, and approved by all the boards, one would think that the taxpayer is properly informed, but I found that not as, that is not always the case. Not always is proper information or supported reasoning behind a purchase or repair was provided to the residents so they could make a well-informed decision. Partly, possibility to a fault of my own. Sometimes, all the hard work that is required to make a presentation to the boards, we then find only parts of the information getting to the taxpayer. Sometimes feels like we are set up to fail because of purposeful misinformation. What really started to change my view was when several years ago, we were in the process and planning of buying a new plow truck a year out, because a truck, because truck chassis at the time were hard to get, and any new funding at that time wouldn't be available till then as well. During that time, I was approached by two board members that are no longer board members that had heard it might be possible to get a chassis that year. Said, I don't know, but I'll ask the dealer. Turned out that they had build slots available at ninety-five percent, and were ninety-five percent sure we could get a truck ready to go before that winter, saving some dollars as well it purchased earlier. I brought the information back to those members, and they said if the dealer would put, put us in on a build slot, we'll get you the money, and it has to be painted green. Purchasing a year ahead would save us about twenty thousand dollars. So I talked with the dealer, asked if they had slots, and they would put us in the lineup, and they agreed. Mind you, I never signed for anything. I knew better than that. About mid-September of that year, I got a call that the truck chassis was in. I thought, great, we're going to get a truck a little early, save the town some money. But not to my surprise, when I told the board members involved, I found out that they haven't even tried to get the money approved early, or even willing to try. How was I feel about that? I felt like I was being set up. I don't know, but in the best interest of myself, the department, and bring in anything to light, I left it alone. Ever since then, I have been cautious, on the cautious side of anything. I came to public service from private construction and have over thirty years of public works from the bottom up. Almost ten of those years have been in the supervisory director's role, while retaining the ability to jump back in to help the group any way I can. My current position with you for almost five years now is a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five physician. Is a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five position that has no help. I'm married to a phone. It's never off. I take it wherever I go, including vacation. It is, it is the job. Please don't misunderstand the no-help comment. I have help, and it's from my crew. They are the ones that I call on when the need arises, but make no mistake, I am first point of contact and required to answer. I watch the weather. I decide if my wife and I get to have a night out, never mind whether or not I go to one of my grandchildren's birthday parties. I'm the one that calls myself in to check road conditions. I'm the one that has to inspect and clear emergency call before you dig calls. Someone calls in the middle of the night, I'm the one that goes out and inspects it. I can count almost on one hand the amount of times I've had to have someone be on call for me in my absolute absence. By the sudden interest that someone having or not having a town vehicle, truck, it's a requirement of the job. The truck is used for town business. It's twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, on the job, ready to respond. The truck has never been out on a personal use, no matter where someone might have seen it. No one has ever come to me to ask, but lately, that's all I've heard. Whether you wanted to discuss, be informed, or just to ask a question, agree or disagree, I have never turned anyone away. But what has increasingly been an issue for me are the critics. I know they are there. They always have been, and that's okay. I have even made invites, but some never show. Do they want to understand why or what we do? Initially, four, maybe five months ago now, I initially decided to retire at the end of June due to the changes Initially, four, maybe five months ago now, I initially decided to retire at the end of June due to the changes in our pension program. At that time, many people, including residents, came to me and asked why. You can't retire yet, we still need you. So I started to rethink, I still needed to work a couple of years yet anyway. My contract with, contract with the town was up in July. So I had to start negotiating a new term and I was looking for a two-year contract with guaranteed increments each year. It started out being a no to what I asked for and when there was an almost verbal agreement, but non-committing while waiting for the approval of an additional selectmen. Then came the meeting a couple of months ago where I guess I was ill-prepared for that meeting's outcome. Crossed the board and I left with only one year proposal to think about it. Then at last mi- month's meeting after I sent the, a letter asking to reconsider, you all agreed to the two-year contract. But still I wasn't sure how everyone felt or why they changed their mind. While all this was happening, I had put out some resumes to other potential employers while you were deciding to grant me a two-year or not. I had a poss- I had possible opportunities that could move me in another direction. And I looked into that further. Over the past few months, the increasingly clear shifting of the political climate and indecisiveness with the boards. I have found it no longer aligning with my values that originally drew me to the town of Andover. Environment and stress levels put upon me are increasingly un- unhealthy, have made it challenging for me to serve you effectively. I hope my departure can make room for new voices that reflect the department's current direction. And whoever fills this position will receive full support of board members for its continued success. I believe I will be leaving the Public Works Department, Town of Andover, better conditioned than when I arrived. I remain proud of the work my crew and I have accomplished together in my short time here. And I trust that the majority of residents are proud too. Thank you.
Jay, thank you, um. Jay, just a couple of questions that I wanted to ask and really what I was hoping to, to sit there and do is, um. When you say it's twenty-four seven and, and we look for a, a replacement for you. What should we as a board be considering?
Well, yeah, you know, somebody that's committed to the town, um, you know, some of the things that I was hoping that we would know in future, depending on, there really needs to be a second. Needs to be a second on call, on-call person, you know? Uh, the person that sits here in this seat needs to have the ability to have a life. You know, I mean, it's. Sometimes it's hard to juggle life. You know, we all would like things to do or do things and, you know, if I can't, uh, like this weekend I was in New Hampshire, watching my granddaughter's soccer games. You know, we were out to dinner and just as we sat out to dinner, uh, I got the phone call from Talon Dispatch. Which wasn't that big of a deal, still an interruption, gotta go outside, get away from all the noise as best I could and, you know, I called. You know, I called the guys in. You know, when you, when you leave for the weekend or you try to have plans, it'd be nice to leave it with somebody. And, and not have to worry about, uh, the thinking of others.
Okay, and the, the position that you took, you took in private sector?
Correct.
And, um, as we move forward, you put in your resignation letter that you would be happy to assist as we move forward to help Eric and to have us get to a new pe- person in that, in your seat.
Yep.
Anything you can do to help us would be greatly appreciated, so.
Yeah, I, I I would have no problem helping out, you know, if I gotta come here Sunday evening or something, you know, I'm, you know, keep the, keep the books so to speak, keep everything in order, uh. Later in the evening, meet somebody here to, for some training and I might be able to duck out a day or two here or there to, uh, help out as well, so. We can, we can discuss how the, you know, that can happen.
Okay, and, um, for the end of, for me to, for, I, I greatly appreciate everything you've done because I've been here the five years that you've been here and I was here the five years before you were here, so. I definitely understand the work that you and Eric have done together to, um, at least have a plan for our roads in town. And, and it's not that we as a community have a tremendous amount of resources to spend to redo all of our roads, uh, from the ground up, but, um, truly you guys have done a very good job maintaining our roads and, and, and improving them, so thank you.
You're welcome, it, it all takes time and, and if, if the town, I feel like what we've accomplished uh, and the amount of funding that has been available that you guys have put to the department for your roads and, you know, just the up maintenance, we're we've kind of leveled off and it's, it works, it just now we gotta start to move or the town needs to, to move to look to how, what's the next step in your incorporate other things, you know, likes other paving, reclamation, you know? Now that you got things where you can drive around safely, now you start moving to other processes. And see where that fits in and sometimes you might have to spend more in one year and not in another.
Okay, uh, any of the other members have anything for Jay before we let him go?
Like this, thank you again publicly, Jay. You did a great job for the town, you really did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Welcome.
Thanks. Jeff, you're muted.
Carol, thank you, Carol, um, Jay, thank you, um.
Welcome.
I don't, I didn't see anything in the packet from, from Ricky. Uh, accurate. He just took another job in a different town, okay. All right, uh, let's move on to, uh, item seven, the administrator's report.
Okay, so I'm not gonna go over my entire report because it's in the packet. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. Um, as per this discussion, I, um, Jay has indicated he would be willing to continue working for the town in a limited capacity during the transition. Um, I would like permission to negotiate with him as to how that would look and bring that back to the Board of Selectmen, uh, for, uh, approval. Um, we are, uh, immediately advertising for a new driver to replace our missing senior transportation driver. And so you know Ricky himself drove about half the total hours driven by senior transportation. So we have a big hole in our capability, uh, with Ricky not on board. So that's gonna be, in the last few times we've tried to hire a new driver, it's taken on average six to eight months to find a new driver to replace, so it's not gonna be a quick transition. Um, but we will start working on it as soon as, uh, possible. I also want to thank Jay, um, very kindly for all his years working in public works. Um, it's not always a fun job, that's for sure. Um, he's done a fantastic job managing his budgets, um, presenting the information in a clear way. Um, you know, we've occasionally, uh, disagreed over exact specifications and things like that, but I found he's been a very flexible and great partner to the town. So I really appreciate all his years of service to the town of Andover. And I also appreciate how much driving Ricky's done for the town, he's been a real asset to the senior transportation program. So we're losing two good people this month. I, uh, something was sent around to the Board of Selectmen from Mary Duval regarding the radio event for ham operators. Um, I met with Ma- Mary after she sent that to you, uh, Carol forwarded me that, uh, that email from her. Um, there are no conflicts with the field usage. And I also discussed with her the po- possibility of using the area behind the senior center. So I gave her both those possibilities and said the, the Board of Selectmen would accommodate or the, the town would accommodate her, um, in what they need and this is something they've done in previous years too. So I would like permission to, instead of filling a formal application for use, um, just sign that on behalf of the town and not bring that back to the Board of Selectmen given the limited time. I don't know how other Board of Selectmen members feel about this, but I look at it this as any other use of the community center. Um, it's a fairly low impact to the town or to the, the field area. So regarding zoning changes, uh, it looks now that Governor Lamont has not signed the housing omnibus bill and appears to be backing off on signing it. Um, you might all have seen a lot in the paper, uh, regarding that the last couple of weeks. It would have made some fairly drastic changes to zoning law in the state of Connecticut. Uh, that probably would have had some negative impacts to the town, other areas of it would probably be positive impact. It was geared more towards urban areas than it was towards rural areas. So it looks like they're going back for a rethink, uh, on that. As far as the state budget goes, the state budget, I pulled the town by town finance uh, projections and they held us harmless with ECS funding, which was certainly a worry about that. And they did increase the annual allotment to Town Aid Road for the first time in about, about twenty years, so that was really uh, good. Um, the other thing I would like to discuss with the board is the state is moving up the timeline for the replacement of the Long Hill Road branch. Um, that will be under construction next April. Um, with a nine-month construction season. Um, so that's good, um, it's also bad. And the bad part is the fact that we already have the other uh, bridge on Lake Road at Basola scheduled for the same time. But I think in this case, the Long Hill Road Bridge has to take priority because that's a federal local bridge. Um, and we just don't have the ability to, uh, pay the difference um, for two bridge projects at, at once. Um, we could be out for a federal local bridge project at any one time up to, you know, say six to eight hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, almost the same for a local bridge and we just don't have the, you know, one to two million dollars of swing room. Unless you're willing to consider some sort of a grant anticipation bond, which is expensive. So my suggestion is that we formally vote to put off for one year the replacement of the Lake Road Culver at Basola. Um, so that we can do the federal local bridge program now. So that would be something I'd like the board to consider. Uh, I also wanted to let you know I am taking some vacation time. I'll be gone June sixteenth and seventeenth, uh, July thirty-first through August fourth and August eighteenth through twenty-seventh. Um, other things, I did authorize the cool program to store uh, some of their stuff temporarily in the community center. They're having difficulty finding storage room in the elementary school. And they assured me that they're planning on building an auxiliary storage building, but in the meantime they needed to place, put some stuff. So since we have the room available in the basement storage room, I granted that request. Um, we were extremely fortunate to get a series of grants that have been announced. Um, we've got three grants from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Uh, the first was a five thousand dollar grant for the, uh, Andover Beautification Commission. And I'd like to thank Kathy DeRosa for submitting that grant on behalf of the town. Uh, the second one was the Recreation Commission, received a five thousand dollar grant towards the youth basketball program. And I would like to thank Megan Lally for submitting that grant, uh, on behalf of the town. And the Veterans Monument Field Committee received a ten thousand dollar grant uh, towards the playground and the pavilion at the athletic field. And I'd like to thank the Field Committee for submitting that grant. Um, the other big one that we found out about as part of the budget process in the spring, I had asked our legislative representatives to, uh, fund a series of projects in the town of Andover. Um, and Senator Rahm, representing Andover as part of the fourth district, uh, did get us a legislative grant that will help pay for the recreation field improvements. And that is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant each of the next two budget cycles. So that is basically a half million dollars towards recreational improvements, um, in the town of Andover. So that is really good news. Um, and I would like to sincerely show my appreciation to MD, uh, for his continued support for Andover. Um, and lastly, Governor Lamont paid a visit to Town Hall, uh, last Wednesday. And, uh, I would like to thank S- uh, Selectmen, uh, Murray and Selectmen Lee for being able to meet at short notice with the governor as well as the town's attorney, Dennis O'Brien. Um, we were able to talk about some of the issues that affect Andover directly with the governor. And I thought that was a very productive meeting. And afterward, we brought the governor to the community center, which was full of seniors playing bingo. And, uh, I think he got a kick out of, uh, meeting with the seniors. And the seniors were really excited to be asked the governor questions directly and quite surprised that the governor showed up uh, in Little Wallandover Senior Center.
All right, Eric just went, I don't wanna interrupt, but Scott Person was there as well, so.
Oh, sorry.
Did you forget me?
So, Scott was there meeting with the governor as well, so let's, let's.
You're right.
Kudos.
I apologize for that, Scott.
Oh, before we, before we leave that part, um, uh, the governor sat there and called you the morning that he was coming, Eric, right?
Correct.
I just wanna let you know that, uh, Attorney O'Brien is friends with the governor. And, um, he was incredibly impressed by Eric's performance of discussing the housing issues that are in front of the state. And so I think the governor came away with a very positive impression of the town of Andover that he may not have had before his visit, so Eric, thank you very much for doing such a good job and, uh, Jeff and Scott and Carol for, for attending on such short notice and Anne, I, I have no problem with you, I was out of state traveling when Eric called me, so don't feel. Yeah, and I, I just wanna tell you that, uh, uh, and thank you Attorney O'Brien for, uh, taking my call that morning and showing up, uh, that morning, uh, it was greatly appreciated that you could, um, make the governor's visit to Andover as, uh, as positive as it, it appeared to have gone, so thank you.
When, when we, the governor asked us what he could do for us, we should have thought to, uh, ask him to help us with that handy road light. He, he could have, he could have ta- talked to the DOT and got that pushed along.
I think that's one we're better off doing a little bit more subtly than that. Um, I think I sat down and did have a, a meeting, uh, with CROG's Transportation Chief. And who you know, the guy that runs DOT Traffic Division now used to work for him. So I I think they have a a personal relationship and CROG has done a good job with helping me develop the metrics to bring to DOT to change their mind on this issue. So I'm not saying we're going to be able to do it, but I'm saying we're working pretty hard to do that right now. Because I I recognize that for many people, that will be a significant inconvenience. You know, when we funnel all that traffic onto Hendy, I would expect that will be problematic for residents.
And to Jeff's comments. I mentioned the the housing bill and Eric actually went on to my comments and, you know, it it sounds like Governor Lamont actually listened. And it sounds like there were some changes done to that bill and he's proposing some changes based on our conversations that we had with the governor in our town hall. So there's some positive things happening when he was meeting with us, so I just want to mention that, and I think that's going to be a a positive thing going forward for us in in Andover, so.
Other questions for me?
Are you done with?
Did they increase the tar account?
Yeah, how much money? How much money Town Aid Road, Town Aid Road?
It's going up from around a hundred and eighty-three thousand to around two hundred and fifty thousand a year. I don't have the exact figures. But figure an extra sixty thousand dollars a year, we can spend it. So that's, that's nice. Town Aid Road has not kept track, and if you look at what Connecticut allocates to its towns compared to our neighboring states, it's fairly woeful, but this helps.
So I think we had two things to really actionable items in your report. One was the movement of the Basola Road Culvert from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven. And the other one was
The ham radio.
The ham radio, thank you Carol Lee. Carol Lee writing down things, maybe I should take you up on that, Carol.
Yeah, and the third thing is just an understanding that if I go back and work out a contract with Jay for, you know, essentially partial cover while we're transitioning to a new new person. That that's something the the Board of Selectmen would consider.
On on that one, we consider, email us any, anything that you want, and we should just vote then, try to do it. All right, so I'll make a motion that we allow the town administrator to approve the location of the ham radio. Eric, what is that called? I mean, it's not a.
It's just the ham radio and you could call it the annual gathering. I don't know what they're, the exact.
The annual gathering of the ham radio enthusiasts, and I think they were doing something for state purposes, but the motion will be to allow Eric to provide town facility for the use by the ham radio annual gathering. Jeff Murray seconded. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. That's five nothing on that one. And then What was, what was the other one, Carol? I wrote down ham radio. Eric, what was the other one you wanted us to do?
The the other one would be to authorize me to put off the Lake Road Bridge Project for one year.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we we move the prospective date of the Bazola, Lake Road Bazola Culvert Project from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Actually, from
Twenty twenty-six to twen- twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven.
And that's safe, that's going to be safe to do, Eric?
I hope so.
Well, does that, someone want to second that and we'll have further discussion? Anne Kremay seconded. So Carol, what I was understanding was that because Lake, Long Hill is a federal project. The concern from the state is that we don't get funded for the, for the federal portion of the Long Hill Bridge. And so the state is pushing Eric to sit there and say, we're doing this next year regardless. So the issue for us, Eric, is we could do Bazola Road next year, but it would be done at the same time as the Long Hill Bridge Project. And so then there'd be some, there'd be a cash crunch in doing that.
If we wanted to risk it, we could take, you know, we could basically agree to utilize extra money from the unencumbered fund balance to do it. But that's somewhat risky in that that is essentially our emergency reserve. So we could dip into the emergency reserve if that's what you wanted to do as an option. But it's, it's risky.
So, so our our gamble is obviously, one is a financial gamble that we probably would get through. We could probably do it with the res- with the fund balance that we currently have. But we'd be putting added pressure on not only public works, but on transportation within the community over two areas as opposed to one. I mean, because right now we have Bunker Hill Road closed. To get that bridged on, that bridge will be completed November, December?
Barring anything, any unusual delays.
Okay, and the state is telling you that they want to start Long Hill, when?
They want to start construction on Long Hill, April one. Possibly even try to push utility relocation before that, which is the same thing we tried to do with Bunker Hill.
Okay, and just before we vote on this, where are we at with the design process on Long Hill?
We, I received the seventy percent design files about two hours ago. I will forward them to the board, but I just didn't want to do it right before the meeting. So I will thought, I will send all those to you, you can root view them. I gave them a cursory review. They're not anything we didn't expect from the thirty percent design review. It's the same structure type. It's the same width. It's just the actual nuts and bolts details of the bridge.
Okay, so Listen, as a, as a board, I think it it's only prudent that we sit there and we move the Basola Road Bridge Project back simply to allow, I mean, what is the gamble that we're taking? That culvert is not in great condition? You know?
The gamble is, is we lose the downstream side of that bridge. And during a really heavy rain event, we slump and lose part of the roadway in the downstream side of the culvert. And we either close it or we neck that down to one lane, which is the same thing we did with Hutchinson Road when that culvert failed. And that's been necked down to one lane for almost six years now.
Anybody's, anyone else have any other issues, any of the members?
I'm wondering, do we get any funding at all for the Basola Road Bridge?
Yes, that's fifty percent state funding, fifty percent town funding. It does not look like one of the things the legislature was debating this year, which I was kind of trying to get them to debate. And got Council of Small Towns and the Capital Region Council of Governments to support was increasing the percentage of funding for small bridge replacement to seventy-five percent, state twenty-five percent. Because that is, even with fifty percent match, that's still, you know, a shade over nine hundred thousand dollars that comes out of Andover taxpayers.
And you said it was going up to seventy-five percent, they're looking, considering?
They were considering it, but it didn't make it through the, so unless there's a special legislative agenda, I think that's dead for at least one year, potentially two years. So I was hoping to see that go through. But, you know, it did not.
So Carol, the issue would be if it does pass, we'd be pushing our culvert back to potentially get additional funding from the state.
Well, I don't I think even if they make that change now, I don't know that we would, they would make it retroactive. Because those bond funding has already gone through a bond appropriation. So I don't think they're likely to revisit that. You know, the only thing it would do is it would make potentially our next culvert project easier to fund, because my intention, just, just so everybody knows, we have basically two pools of money right now. One was dedicated for the Bunker Hill Bridge Project. And one is a bridge and culvert fund dedicated to smaller culverts. And you could say, just for numbers purposes, they both have around six hundred, well, between the two of them, there's about a million dollars. So in the case of the Bunker Hill Bridge, we, the contractors, send us invoices. We pay the invoice. As soon as we proved we've paid the invoice, we ask the state to refund that money. So we're getting a hundred percent rebate on that bill, but there's a time gap. Right now, we have pay requisitions today for about three hundred and forty thousand dollars outstanding that we're going to mail checks for within the next couple of days. We'll probably wait five to six weeks before we get that money back from the state. So that's our swing period. Right now, we're okay, but when we get the prefab bridge structures, those are expensive and those have to be paid for before they deliver them. There's going to be one or two month increments where our bill is going to be more like six or seven hundred thousand dollars in a month. So we have to make sure we build the state as fast as we can, get the money back, so we can spend six or seven hundred thousand dollars in one month. And then wait to get reimbursed for that. So we have enough money to do that right now. We would not if we're doing a state local bridge program and a federal local bridge program. Because some of that money is going to be the town's match for the state local bridge program. You know, there we're going to spend one point eight million dollars, but we're only going to get nine hundred thousand dollars of that back. So that's going to eat into that fund as we go along. So this way is definitely safer. And then at the end of both of those, at the end of, if we do Bunker Hill first, and then we do the culvert project, at the end of that period, the money that we have set aside for the large bridge projects, which will be close to a half a million dollars, will then be freed up to start the financing for the next culvert. Because remember, we've got at least four failing culverts we have to address, and they're all going to be, you know, between, you know, one point two and one point eight million or two million dollars each. So we're going to have a series of these, we have to do as fast as we can with whatever money we have. So that's kind of how I'm trying to schedule everything out. But it also requires us to get the bridges in the culverts qualified into the, the state local bridge program. And right now, there's no guarantee of that, because only about thirty percent of the bridges that, you know, get, apply for the grant funding, get it. So it's kind of a, you know. Did that answer your question? Sorry, that was kind of long-winded.
It it was, it was, it was the right information for us to understand. I mean, and just so the board understands, I mean, we would probably have the ability to fund both of them in my head for the amount of money we have available. It just would be risky. It would be a gamble that's not worth taking. So we may as well push the bridge off and hope that the Lake Road Bazula Culvert stands up. It's not a guarantee that it will, but that's probably the best bet. And just so everybody in town understands, Bunker Hill is going to cost the town nothing.
Correct.
Long Hill is going to cost the town nothing.
Correct.
So in a ten-year window, we have every crossing of the Hop River completed with a new bridge within the last ten years.
Well, we'll have three of the four crossings within ten years. Hendy Road Crossing, that's an older, that's a mid-eighties eighty-seven, I think. Do you remember what year that failed, Carol?
I thought that was earlier than that.
Earlier than that. Eighty-two or three, somewhere in there, I think.
Oh, the failing of Hendy, the Hendy Road Cross.
Well, the rebuilding of it was around the early eighties, I think.
Okay, so what are the four crossings? Because I'm missing one, because I know we did one within the last.
Times Farm.
Times Farms.
Hendy Road, Long Hill Road, and Bunker Hill Road.
And Times Farm was done?
Times Farm was completed in seventeen? Kind of.
All right, so that's the one I was thinking of, because I remember that, that we did that one. So we did that one, then Bunker Hill, and now we'll end up with Long Hill done in twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
As to no cost to the town. All right, so there's a motion on the floor regarding the movement of the Lake Road Bazula Road Culvert to twenty twenty-seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was also five nothing, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that we should deal with related to your report? Anybody else have any questions for Eric? Okay, eight A, community signage discussion. I still have to sit there and deal with Elaine. And I will promise that I will get that done before our July meeting.
Say, if you're really too busy, I'll take it on.
I'll deal with Elaine. I'll call her. I told her about that when I saw her at the, the town meeting, and I told her I needed to get with her. I just had not done. Eight B, discussion of blight and level of involvement. We have documentation in our packet from the Blight Enforcement Officer. Anybody have any questions regarding Wayne's report?
If Wayne could add the number of the street in the report, then we would know, you know, all he has is a street, no number.
Anybody have any questions related to that for Eric or?
Well, my thoughts, I look at that and there's a lot of things listed and ninety percent of them seem to be settled. So why do we still see them on the list? Shouldn't it be just the most current things that are being worked on? Haven't been settled yet, et cetera, or just were so.
I actually think this list was the inspections that he's done in the month of May. I don't think we can get the list from the prior ones that he kept everything on there, but
Mostly because I got tired of looking at the things that were whole months and months and months. I didn't look at this month, it was so.
Correct, but the the request from the board members that, that were into the blight issue that we've had, that was that was a request of board members to keep that list going, ongoing, so that we could sit there and see if things had been moved or not moved, but in this month. If things had been moved or not moved, but in this month, what he did was he provided, and I think this is Wayne's first one, is that not?
It is, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, Wayne sat there and gave us the inspections that he did. Um, so that we could understand what he was seeing when he was out there trying to do blight enforcement.
They like seeing all the names and numbers and everything. All that whole big list, the Board of Selectmen did that, I, I think it's a. Celebration. To me. We get to see all the blight enforcement that we've achieved.
I agree with Scott. I think it's, I think it's good to see this.
I mean. There is a lot of things that.
Yeah.
Uh, we've, that have been attempted to get done, and blight enforcement has now become a little bit of a, more of a priority, and I think Eric and. The blight enforcement agent has done a good job. He, he, I mean, in the previous blight enforcement officer. So. Um. Yes, so I had no problem with Wayne's report, it was, it was interesting to me.
Just add some numbers.
Alright, eight C, assessor's analysis on current valuations. Uh, I see the assessor provided us, uh, information, uh, we don't have the state report that was here. Um. A couple of questions for me, Eric, and, and two things is, um. There are some land valuations that are out here. Specifically, some land valuations from Gilead and Cone Road. Um. And I would just like an answer on this, and that, you know, that property was sold for, it appears sold for in twenty twenty-four for. Somewhere in the range of one point, I think it was one point five million dollars, if, if I'm not wrong, um, three different parcels on that property. Uh.
So you're asking why the valuation is so low? The answer to that is it's in, it's, all that land is in P A four ninety. So it's either in forestry or agri- agricultural land.
I do understand that, and. But normally. P A four ninety properties come out of P A four ninety in first year. And was it, and, and then it, and it doesn't appear to be on the P A four ninety lists that John puts out every year. So. I am sure there's a reason, and I'd like to understand that. Um, but since. That property had transferred among family members for a period of time. I'd like to understand when it got outside of the family members. Was the P A four ninety. Reissued, and Carol, since you were in the town clerk's office, do you?
I checked, Jeff. I checked.
Was it done?
It, it is back in four ninety.
When?
Within a couple of months of when it was purchased.
Okay. Okay. And is that property, just from my understanding, is that property still part of the state program, Scott?
Yeah.
It is part of the state program. Okay, so it can never be developed.
No.
Okay. Alright. Just because I couldn't see it there, thank you Scott for finding that information out for me. And then E- Eric, just on the assessors, two, two, two other things on the assessor, um. Uh, one is the assessor. Uh, sponsored a bill. To sit there and eliminate, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals. And, um. I don't know if that is passed, if it got passed. But, um. It's interesting to me that, that that occurred, because it's always difficult for me to understand how to evaluate. The assessor. And, and I would like Eric for you to sit there and ask him, cause I was hoping he'd be on here, I was like, how do we evaluate the job? That the assessor is doing for the community, because there's no. Specific, you know, I know he comes up with these percentages, and then we're supposed to get to these percentages, I just don't understand how to evaluate. The performance of the assessor's office and the assessor. And it would be helpful if there's some way that we, as a board. Could understand that and understand how it could be done, um. So he's not here to explain it to us, uh. But the other part too is you should have included the state report that was part of what he is answering his questions to, that's in the last packet. So.
Oh, but it was just in the last packet.
Oh, I understand.
In this packet also.
Yeah, you should put that two-page report in this packet also. Because all of the things he's talking about here, we've got to reference back to the other side of it. Uh, I'll sit there and, and go over this in my.
My, uh, my point about that land, the agricultural land up there is if it's sold for. Even a million dollars, it, it's only, if it's assessed for two fifty or something, how could, it, its value is actually what it was sold for. Not, not, even though it's in four ninety. There still is a high per acre price on agricultural land. And it's somewhere around six or seven, eight thousand dollars, cause I know a lot of people that buy. Agricultural land, and that's what they're paying for, and so I can't believe that, that the assessment can be so low, if that's what its real value is.
But I don't think. I mean, that's the whole point of the P A four ninety. Program. It is just like every other tax credit. And every other rebate to veterans and this group and that group and. You know, why the biggest manufacturer in the town of Andover pays almost no personal property tax? Because all his machinery is exempt, those are all state. Um. You know, things that the state has imposed.
Scott, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, I've always. I always thought that when someone sells a property within the town, that's the, that's. The price that has been established and set. And you're trying to get to a threshold. At all properties that they. Are reasonably assessed, because. The state has this theory that you gotta come to a seventy percent threshold, but what happens in, in. In Andover is certain properties are assessed at a much higher than seventy percent rate, and all, and other properties are assessed at a much lower than seventy percent rate. So you're trying to be fair and get to a flat seventy percent across the board, and I've had this conversation with Eric where. It's all about, uh, all boats float equally. You can't have a certain area that is at a hundred percent, and then a certain area that is lower than seventy percent, and. It's just not fair, and, and even with the Board of Assessment Appeals, it's extremely difficult. To get to the root problem with, in my head, with related to all of this, which is. All of the properties need to be evaluated together, and. The assessor will tell you he does that, and, and that's okay, but. Some of the data doesn't always shake out that way.
Well, what you will see, I think, just looking at other. Towns that have gone through V revale. In the last year. That, uh, the housing market for high-end homes has cooled off. And the lower end starter homes. Are going for a lot more money, their real estate value has increased a lot. Comparatively, so I expect in the next. Revale cycle, uh, the people with starter homes, you know, are gonna see a large increase in their. Uh, their evaluation, their revale, that seems to be the trend that other towns are seeing. Um, and that's been a cycle, if you look back at twenty years of data, that's been a cycle, um. You know, when the housing market is cooling off. You start to see the starter homes, you know, raise in value much more. Disproportionately, and when the housing market is really on fire, like it has been for a while. The expensive homes go up the most in valuation. So this doesn't seem to be an abnormal trend to me. Uh. By any means.
Okay. Alright, um, we'll move on to eight D, traffic around the lake, are there any issues related to traffic around the lake that we wanna talk about?
Uh, no, and ask that that stay on. As a discussion point on the agenda, so we left it on there. I don't have anything else to say other than. Um, I'm hoping to get the resident state trooper. Out on a bicycle patrolling in that area. Um, and also step up more. You know. More traffic enforcement specifically in the lake area. Uh, especially during summer.
Okay. Um. Let's move on to eight E, the Bunker Hill Bridge update.
Uh, so Bunker Hill Bridge update, I've given you most of it, they're around twenty-three percent. Uh, according to the construction estimator, around twenty-three percent complete. Um, what that means is they've, uh, put in the water dams to channelize the river. They've removed all three of the old culverts. On the side facing Route Six, they've replaced. The bottom, dug the bottom out and replaced it with stream-like material. Um, and they're working on doing the other side the same way. And they've, they've done the first, what's called a micro pile, and a micro pile is basically just. A foundation pile that goes down through about forty-five feet of sand. And then a certain depth into bedrock. Uh, and what they have to do is they have to do a test pile first, which they've done, and they've grounded it. And now they wait, uh, in, in a couple more days, it will be set up enough, they. Essentially use another machine and try to pull it out. Um, and based on the stress, uh, you know, the bending stress of doing that. They make the final depth for the other pilings. Um, and they should start drilling for the other micro pilings within a day or so. On the Route Six side of the bridge. Um, and the goal is to. Basically move them directly from that side to the next side and re-mobilize to the other side of the river as soon as they're done. Um, hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll be pretty much done with the micro piles. And on to forming the actual footings for the bridge.
Hey, any other questions for Eric on Bunker Hill Bridge? Alright, eight F, uh, OSHA update.
So we did finally got our official, uh, OSHA. Uh, citation, I believe I passed that on to all the board members. Uh, the long and the short of it, it was our total initial fine. Was about four thousand dollars, which was actually very low, um, I was pleased to see. Um, compared to what many of our other surrounding towns have experienced. Um, we've addressed basically all of their concerns at this point, we are planning on setting up a meeting. With the Director of Conosha with the intention to further negotiate the fines down. Um, and explain, you know, what we've done to mitigate and, you know, why we should. Uh, get out of a significant portion of those fines. So hopefully in the next month or so, I'll have the, the final report for you one day.
Alright, eight G, the R O V request. Didn't we vote on this last month?
Uh. Yes, we did, last month we took care of that.
I forgot what the R O V request was.
Moving the bounce house and the popcorn machine.
Okay.
Alright, so we can take that off. Uh, didn't we vote on eight H, water fountain?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I just left it so that I would have an update. Um, we had the water company scheduled to come out and do the testing. But somebody smacked the pipe. Um, coming out of the ground today at some point. Um, so the main valves are shut off and. Uh, we have the plumber in to evaluate and figure out what has to fix it, so that got delete probably. You know, leak, um, cause I don't know when I can get them back out to test. But that is in the works.
Okay, uh, eight I, discuss and act upon new committee members for. Number one, the Community and Senior Center Hiring Committee. Um. Uh, just as a question before that, um. Uh, Eric, do you have a job description that has been prepared for this? Is there a dra- I should ask it a different way, is there a job description that's out there that is available for the members of the board?
Not that I know of.
Even from other members of the board.
So I think we have the old job description, um. That we can go on and. We have to advertise for it, so we, I think we can still act. And appoint someone to be on this committee, and then just. Work on the. Job description.
If you have, if you have the basic job description, Carol, can you share it with all the members?
I can, but I don't know how to do it while I'm on this, so I.
No, 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 not, not right now, after the meeting.
Okay.
Moral would be perfect. If you could.
So. Are we going to make a motion to nominate?
Yeah, this was just before we got into it, because I know the job description is important to this whole process, so even if we hire somebody, we would wanna share it with who. We put on the hiring committee, and so before we do this, let's, let's talk about. The makeup of the hiring committee, um.
So for the rep commission, Anne Marie Daigle. Um, said she'll serve back again.
Okay, so, so the two members of our board were myself and you, Carol, Anne Marie Daigle. We need one person from the public, and we need a one person from, um.
Senior center.
Senior centered town, so Eric, do you have someone that you can refer us to? For that position?
Well, I think if you look at everybody. Of the people that volunteered for the hiring committee, certainly Joe King, Julie Havwell, and Louise Goodwin are all seniors.
No, 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 I, I wasn't talking about those individuals, I was talking about, um, a, a senior center director from another town. If you could sit there and work with us to find that. That other member that would be a, uh, we would want on there, someone that actually serves in the position, so in the past. The previous time we had the individual from Coventry. Maybe she's available, maybe she's not, if we could sit there and work that out, and you could sit there and come back to us and email us on a potential options, that would be great. And now we, we can go through the other members, so. There's four members, and I'm assuming everybody on the board is familiar with all four members.
Yes.
Right, um, they're all. Good individuals, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem with any of them, um. So right now, we have Carol, we have Anne Marie, we have Jeff. We have to add someone that, of these four, and then we have another individual for. A person working in that environment, is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes, that's what we decided on last month.
Okay, so. Um. Who would somebody like to nominate from those four individuals?
I'd like to nominate Marcy Minor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, further discussion on Marcy. Did we lose Scott?
I think we did.
We'll have to get Scott back. Um. I know we lost Dennis, um, it, it, um. Dennis texted me that he got kicked out, he's not back yet, is he? I don't think so.
No, I don't see him.
Uh, can you check Eric on if people are waiting, or if we got any problems?
I don't have anybody that I can see in the waiting room. So I don't know what the issue would be.
Okay. Is that phone number, there's Dennis, there you go. Okay, um. Let's just text Scott.
I just text him.
You texted Scott?
Yes, I just asked if you lost internet or what happened.
Second.
Okay, Scott's now in the waiting room, so I will admit him.
If you're talking to us, Jeff, you're muted.
All right, Scott, you can hear us, right?
Good now, yeah.
Okay, so Scott, were you here, uh, Carol nominated Marcy Minor for the position and she would. Marcy was seconded by Ann Kremay for the hiring committee?
I did not hear that.
Okay, so that, that is where we're at, so we're waiting for you to get back. Any disc, any, any discussion related to Marcy? Okay, all those in favor of Marcy Minor for the hiring committee?
Aye.
Aye. Jeff, did I miss your vote?
Jeff, I'm an aye.
Okay, so that was five, nothing. Okay, so, uh. Eight, I, two, website review committee. Do we have a member from the Board of Selectmen that would like to be on that?
Don't know much about websites. Give comments?
Yeah, um, since no one wants to, uh, do that, I. I will sit there and be on that, I will volunteer to be on that. If anyone has a problem with that. And personally, I think you should, we should. Accept all three individuals on that board.
Good idea.
Good idea.
They're excellent.
I'll make a motion that we. Uh, appoint to the Website Review Committee, Jay Kamis, Megan Lally, and Scott Soyet.
I'll second.
All right, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 That is also five, nothing. Um, and then a discussion and act upon new committee members for Andover's Finest, we will push that off for another month. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Can I just ask a question on that? We didn't have a committee the last time, right? We just advertised to the public. And we asked the public to submit their. People who they felt should be recognized.
That's correct.
I'm just. This has just been going on, it's been going on for two years, this started in twenty twenty-three, I looked that up.
Well, we actually put people on the, we actually have three people, we just.
I know.
Since then.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, rather than keep pushing.
The reason that happened was we ran out of money with, to do the paving, the patio there, so. That's why this is on hold.
Well, we need to move it off hold. I'm with Carol.
Do something besides a pa- paving a patio, but uh, maybe make a plaque and. Post people's names on that in the community center somewhere. Because we do have the criteria still out there on the website and. I just think we should encourage people to put the names forward and then we start voting on this monthly because. It's been two years, so, and I understand if, you know, the finances were an issue, I know. The bricks could get costly, um. It wasn't really that bad though, when we were selling the bricks for down, doing the Veterans Monument Park, so.
Uh, I think, Carol, you're right, we should take applications and nominations all the time, to be really honest, we don't have to. Vote every month to appoint or to put somebody on Andover's Finest, but we should just continue to take nominations.
I think we're doing it every six months.
Yeah, six months, every quarter, something like that would work.
Yeah, six months.
Okay, so how do we, uh, let's sit there and, uh, we'll work with the Website Review Committee to get more nominations and applications. To sit there and be put forth.
There was some paperwork that had to be filled out also, I think.
Okay. Uh, it's, it's like a Hall of Fame, we don't want to sit there and. Have too many people. I mean, you don't want to put like Jeff McGuire in it every other quarter, it's not gonna work. Right?
Right, there'd be every other brick would be Jeff McGuire, but.
That's not how it's gonna work, okay. All right, uh, let's move on to nine, a new business, discuss next upon the following, uh, a, uh, discussion and possible action. On the draft audit report for the period ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four regarding the transfer of unexpendited Board of Education appropriations. To the AES Capital Fund. So just so everybody understands the reason that. The draft audit report came out, there is that money there. The way that that was done was the Board of Finance voted. To sit there and move the unexpendited Board of Education money. Less the two percent lapsing fund. Into the AES Capital Fund. And personally, I don't really, I, I, I know we have an issue with the bathroom there. But the way that it's done, uh, does not agree with me from how it got accomplished. So just so you can understand, the. Money was from. The twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four fiscal year, correct? Correct. And it went all the way to the end and the Board of Education had gone to the Board of Finance and then Board of Finance voted. And it's now going back into the audit, so it never reached a legislative group within the town, which. Is. The town meeting. So nowhere did the town meeting vote on. Approval of moving that money there. So. The reality to me is that the town meeting should have been voted, it should have been voted on at the town meeting when we had all of this budget work. That we just did. And it didn't get done there, and so shame on us for not getting that done in advance. I, I spoke to Mark Brinker about that o- over the weekend. And, and asked him, because I had missed one of the town meetings and, uh. I had asked him if it had been voted on and he said it had not been voted on. And to me. The Board of Finance does not have that legislative authority to do that. Unilaterally. And the Board of Fin, and the Board of Selectmen does not even have the authority unilaterally to move that money. The only group and the only, the only thing in our town and our town charter and Carol, you can. Comment on this is the town meeting that has the authority to approve. The movement of those funds from unexpendited, because the reality in my head is the way it should have went from an accounting perspective is. It should have went back into the general fund and within this budget cycle. That money should have been moved to the AES Capital Fund. And then what would have happened is we would have taken it out of the general fund without taxing the taxpayers. And then the taxpayers could have voted on that. That's how, in my head, it should have happened, but it didn't. But I do believe that because it's such a large amount of money and because we need to start doing things correctly. That needs to go in front of a town meeting and needs to go in front of a town meeting quickly. So, I asked the town attorney for an opinion on that, uh, last week, he provided it, I provided it for you. I realize you haven't had time to research and go over all of that, um. But I just think from a common sense perspective, you should be able to understand what we're dealing with, um. And that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion purposes. So.
This is a long letter or, or whatever the, the legal opinion is, very long and. We haven't had time to, to look at it, to read it, because we just got it this morning.
It's, it's five pages.
Yeah, and. Getting through five pages of legal stuff is not easy, we're not lawyers. But we do want to figure out what's going on before we vote on anything, even to run a plant, town meeting.
Okay, Carol?
Can I just ask, so the Board of Finance already approved this transfer of. Funds from one budget line to.
No, not a budget line, not a budget line to another budget.
Excess funds at the end of the year to transfer into the capital account.
Correct.
So they already voted to do this.
Correct.
And, and this is the twenty twenty-four audit that we just received a draft. Copy of a couple of weeks ago.
Uh, it, it had been in, uh, yes, the Board of Finance and, and Eric had had that from Mahoney and Sable and. The Board of Finance was looking to schedule a meeting with the auditor to approve the audit. And to sit there and set the mill rate. Like one of the legislative authorities that the Board of Finance has is to set the mill rate, so they were.
Can I ask, was that a finding in the audit?
No, 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 the auditor, the auditor put it in the fund.
The auditor put it in the fund, so it wasn't noted as finding by our auditor.
No, because, because the auditor believed, the auditor, Carol, and this goes for you. The auditor is not looking at who has legislative authority to approve it. It was done in the Board of Finance meeting to approve it and he just made the accounting transaction on it. So this would be something good for you, Carol, to sit there and look through the charter and to make sure.
I know.
And to make sure that I'm missing, to not, make sure I'm not missing something related to how the charter works. Now Dennis went through and did the, the state statutes and everything related to the Board of Finance and what the true. Authority is related to the Board of Finance. So the true authority for the Board of Finance is really to set an upper threshold, in my head, it's always been this, to set an upper threshold. For a budget amount to be spent. And then it goes to the legislative body, which is the town meeting, and the town meeting cannot increase. The spending amount above what the Board of Finance has set, but they can decrease it. And so you, you have these, these issues of who has. Who has legislative authority over certain things, so with the Board of Selectmen, it's really what's out there with. Uh, ordinances and how our charter reads and with the Board of Finance, it's, it's what our charter read and what state statute says. So in my head, where I'm after, what I'm totally after is. I cannot see us continuing, I can't see a future Board of Selectmen having to continue to go through processes like we were going through. And have these types of transactions, because it's gonna happen again and, um. It's got to be done correctly, so that's my only issue, I, I was. I was talking about this at the last town meeting, it's, I, I, I know we didn't vote on it, I know the Board of Selectmen didn't vote on it. And to be really honest, even if the Board of Selectmen voted on it, it wouldn't have been right anyway. It had to be in front of the town meeting. And the problem that mentally. I'm dealing with it, and Eric, you, um, Mahoney and Sable wants to get the audit finalized, right? Because they have to get it to the state.
They've already submitted it to the state.
They've submitted to the state.
All they're doing is having a meeting, scheduling a meeting with the Board of Finance. To discuss the audit and their audit findings. Which is not to say they couldn't issue a correction. Um, if one was needed, but as far as Mahoney Sable is concerned, the audit is filed.
Well, the problem that I see is if it doesn't get done and we don't have a town meeting. And we go back through and we go to the auditor and he reads the opinion of the attorney and understands what the attorney is saying. And what I believe is accurate, then that money really needed to go to the general fund. So I would recommend that we have a town meeting to get it approved.
So, my question in the charter under eight zero six, right? D. It says that. As the town administrator through the Board of Selectmen may request within the last three months. But then it says this section shall not affect the local Board of Education, will, shall have. The power to make its own transfers, provided that such transfers are reported to the Board of Finance. So, but you're saying the Board of Finance. Approve that.
Well.
Transfer or whatever you would like to call that.
Yeah.
Dennis is waving his hand.
I see.
You're gonna explain something to me.
He doesn't wanna let me talk, but, uh.
I know he doesn't.
No, it's not that I don't like when Dennis talks, because I listen to Dennis, it's Dennis, Brett, be brief, we were hoping to get out of here at nine.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to get out too. That, that section she's talking about is, it applies to, uh, the Board of E- Education handling its budget during the, during the year, during the fiscal year. Not at the end of the fiscal year when it doesn't spend money. That money automatically goes into the, into the town fund, it's, it's town money, it's not, becomes town money, it's not Board of Ed money. And, uh, that money is, um. You know, and the Board of Finance has no authority whatsoever to make act, to take action on that money. It's, it, there's no good solution, there's no good process, going to a town meeting is not ideal. I recommend, in my opinion, that an ordinance be passed, giving the power to the Board of Selectmen, which is the. The Board of Selectmen is the, is the top agency on the town side, no question. Board of Finance is not, the Board of Finance has special responsibilities, but they don't include. Handling, uh, you know, taking town money and giving it back to, putting it in a, in a, uh, uh, a special fund. They can recommend it, they're, they're, they're all about recommending, if you look through the statutes, the word recommend appears everywhere. They're not, they don't have the final say on very much, one thing they have the final say on, as Jeff said, is to set a ceiling on the budget. When the budget is acted on by the, by the town, including the, a town meeting and then, you know, and then when it goes to referendum. They, they set the ceiling on the budget, they're there to make sure the town can afford the budget, that's what they do and they do it well. But it's not there to transfer money from the.
Carol.
Town to the, to any, uh, uh, special fund.
Carol, you're.
Not by themselves.
Okay, Carol, your issue, your issue on those, that charter section is transfer between expenditure funds. We, we cannot, no one within the town can tell the Board of Education how to tran, they can transfer their money between any expenditure line item. So an expenditure line item, but what we're dealing with here is the Board of Education was under budget. By a certain amount of money for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-four. And what happened to that money is. They took the two percent non-lapsing money, which they have the authority by state statute to move the two percent. Into an, a non-lapsing account, no one can do anything about that, but the remaining money. The remaining money was voted on to, was voted to move to the AES Capital Fund. So, that is not a transfer that the Board of Finance or the Board of Education can do. The only entity that can approve that is really the town meeting.
Okay. It, the only thing that's throwing me is that first sentence in. Eight oh six C, that says when an agency excluding the local Board of Ed. Shall desire to transfer funds within its appropriation from funds. Set apart for one purpose to another, such agency shall file a request with the town administrator. Right? So, every, it says excluding, right? The local Board of Education appropriation from the funds set apart for one purpose to another. And then within the last three months is when this can be done, so all I'm saying. Is, I thought our charter gave more authority to our Board of Finance. And that's all I'm saying, if, if the Board of Finance. Voted to do that, should we really be? undoing what they did? And I know with the statutes and the authorities and that that they give to the Board of Finance. But I also know that our charter can give more authority to different boards and commissions. And I think that our charter did give the Board of Finance more authority, separate authority from the authority of the Board of Select. That's my only question, and it, they've already done it. It's in the audit. I don't know. That I, I'm just asking, and again, like Anne said, this packet, everything came out late on Thursday, well, about eleven thirty Thursday morning. So we really don't have time to research anything. And then Dennis's opinion, you sent to us this morning at nine thirty. I didn't even see it in the email till twelve thirty, because the office was a little bit crazy. That's my only issue is.
Listen, you guys, you guys can research this. We can have a a quick meeting. I am just telling you that in my I mean, I've never, I've nev, I mean, listen, think of it this way, Carol. I'll just use your common sense thing. Imagine if the Board of Selectmen moved money into a fund and sat there and said, okay, we're under budget. We're gonna move it into this fund in any significant manner like this and what would occur. So I'm just, I I am, I am looking at this in a very simple way. We have to understand what is right and what is wrong moving forward. And you can have, you can have time to sit there and do this. But I would tell you, it would be appropriate for us to do this and and make that, make, have a town meeting. Because it is the legislative body within the town, not the Board of Selectmen, and vote on this. So, because in the future, I don't really wanna sit there and see this continuously happening that the because what's going on is the Board of Finance. Well, the Board of, the Board of Education is going to the Board of Finance and trying to have the Board of Finance make a legislative decision for the community. That this is the best use of the funds without balancing that out amongst every organization within the town. And I can't I don't believe we should allow that to happen in the future. I think there has to be a balance. And, uh, you know, because next year, let's sit there and say, we don't know. I mean, we haven't gotten any information from the Board of Education. If they're gonna be under budget or over budget. Let's say they're under budget, because they'll probably be under budget. And we don't know, but let's, let's look at it this way. What the Board of Education will do is go to the Board of Finance and have the Board of Finance vote on it. And if we sit there and allow it to happen this year, it'll happen next year, and it'll continue to happen every other year that we move forward. So.
Remember, the Board of Education isn't like padding people's salaries or doing crazy things with the money. They're only putting it into their capital fund so they can fix things like the building, the plumbing. Having a elevator that works so the handicapped kids can get up and down. That's that is federally required, you know? It's not like they're wasting money. They're only making use of it.
I I agree with you, Anne, but I'm, what what is occurring is those dollars, the the under budget amount that is occurring, sits there and comes back and you have to evaluate it within the total needs of the town. Now, I'm not sitting there saying I agree that I would put that money in that fund. But I am sitting there and I am telling everyone, I'm sitting there in my head going, I've read the stuff and I've looked at the stuff. The ultimate board to make that decision is the town meeting. And the town meeting never had the opportunity to vote a yes or no on that issue.
Are you saying that every year they have to have a town meeting in order to move this money?
Or is it a one? To be, to be really honest, Anne, if if they allowed it to go in the right way, the money just would have went back into the general fund and there would have been nothing on the town meeting. There would be no vote. There would be no requirement, because the the Board of Education was under budget. The money should have gone to the general fund. And then a decision could have been made and voted on a town meeting if we wanted to fund uh five hundred thousand dollars to the Andover AES Capital Fund. It would have been voted on by the town meeting, and truly, it should have ended up going to the budget referendum. This did not get to the budget referendum ever in any manner. So I'm looking at this simply because we need to be, we need to do a better job as a Board of Selectmen and how this whole thing works together, and it's got to be done correctly. And reality is, reality is, we're a town, town meeting form of government.
That is correct.
Haven't always gone to town meeting. Look at the community center. It was built a million dollars. It never went to a town meeting or referendum for a vote.
Uh, it actually did get on our budget. It did get on our budget referendum that year. We actually talked about it in great detail as to what was going on at that meeting. So.
And the rules, the rules have.
They never voted on it.
No, the rules for that ARPA money were for the Board of Selectmen or the governing body of the town to make the right decision on where that money went.
Governing body. Now you're saying the governing body is.
It's the Board of Selectmen. It was the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so then why do we have to bring this thing with the Board of Ed to a town meeting?
In the Charter that says that those under expenditures are supposed to go back to the general fund.
And we can either vote on it or it would go back to the general fund. And I would rather vote on it, Anne. I'm trying to, but I am telling.
On it to go to.
The motion, the motion at the town meeting would be to move the money to the Andover AES Capital Fund.
Well, I don't see. I think the Board of Finance has already made a decision with it, so. I feel they're the ones that deal with the finance more than we do.
They have certain limitations as to what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to evaluate. Again, they're supposed to set an upper limit as to what the organizations can spend. And each year, they should evaluate what we spend and how we spend it to determine if our amount is is appropriate for the taxpayers of the town to spend. They should be evaluating expenditures of the Board of Education. They should be evaluating expenditures of the town. And they should set the upper limit of what can and can't be afforded by the taxpayers of the town. They should not be making a decision to sit there and put money into a fund that is a capital fund. Which is not what they should be doing.
All that I'm saying is if it was already done by the Board of Finance, the draft audit is completed. I understand if it was done incorrectly, then it does need to be corrected for the future. But should we be undoing what the Board of Finance did, what's already audited? I didn't even, to be honest with you, re, get a chance to read the Board of Finance minutes when this transfer took place. I didn't have time to do any of the research on that as to how it was done or anything else. And not that I'm arguing, obviously, you know, Dennis is our town attorney, but I didn't even really get a chance to look at that and go back and forth.
How about we push this off to next week? But my point is, we really do need to vote on it before the end of the month.
And can I ask why it's the end of this month?
That we have. Now we're gonna cross into another fiscal year if we let it go past January or for June thirty.
But it was twenty twen, it was fiscal year ending June thirty twenty four.
Correct, which is just being issued.
Jeff, wasn't there another vote taken in March of this year to transfer more money into that fund by the Board of Finance? So that would, that happened during uh this fiscal year.
Well, the approval of that money to move into that fund was done to try to get through the audit and get approval for the audit.
Okay, well. It was three hundred and sixty grand. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it either. I'm I'm just, I'm just.
Listen, I am not, I I I I need everybody to understand, I'm not opposed to this. And so, Anne, just so you understand, I am not opposed to the money going there. Listen, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen makes the recommendations to what moves into the capital funds. The Board of Selectmen sat there and recommended that a hundred thousand dollars go into that AES Capital Fund before we understood that the Andover Board of Education was over budget by four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, under budget, excuse me, by four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. So I just sit in there and go, you, we're doing it wrong. We're gonna, we're gonna allow it to be done incorrectly. I I'm not, I'm not in agreement with that. It needs to be done correctly so that in the future, as this occurs, things get done in an appropriate manner, because the Board of Finance really should have just pushed that back into should have pushed that back into the general fund. And on this budget, we should have put that money in to it should have been put back into the capital fund in an appropriate level to cover the requirements of the school to do the bathroom. And then, Anne, the question I'd ask you, I'd go right to you, go are we doing that this year? Has anyone been in communication with the town regarding the the bathrooms and doing the bathrooms? And and this is stuff that we either start working together or we're gonna have other problems. So right now, my one issue is that the Board of Finance moved three hundred and sixty thousand dollars into a capital fund, and they did it on their vote, which truly does not hold the authority to actually do that correctly. So I say we do it correctly. That's all I'm saying.
So you're saying to go to a town meeting to change this for the future?
No, to do it correctly, not to change it, to do it correctly and to do it correctly in the future. Correct.
But you're not taking away the money that's in the AES.
No, we're voting on it to 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 say yes. We all agree that the legislative body of the town, the town meeting, votes to sit there and appro, and take the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and put it into the AES Capital Fund.
There, there doesn't need to be a vote on this. This doesn't need to be a meeting. The Charter says where the money goes.
Hmm, it does need to be a meeting, Scott, because if, let's sit there and say, uh, let's sit there and say we want to have a, a, well, I don't even wanna go there. There has to be a meeting, because you have to have a town meeting to vote yes on this, or in essence, it's been done incorrectly, and we're gonna have this problem year after year after year, and we're gonna.
Yeah, can't do it.
Would it have to be a referendum too, or just a town meeting?
There's no changing this. The Board of Selectmen didn't know that there was gonna be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra, so we
No, we did.
To put two hundred into their capital fund.
No, no, no.
Did not to take it.
We, we, we knew. We, we did know.
I don't, I don't.
The Board of Education, the Board, listen, we knew, and I don't even wanna go into the whole thing about knowing, we knew that there was money left over. There's no doubt about it, Scott.
Oh, we knew there was money left over. Never knew how much it was. Never knew how much it was.
Money left, and that's why the Board of Select did not put the hundred thousand into this year's budget.
No, no, incorrect. The Board of Selectmen recommended to put a hundred thousand dollars into.
We did.
The Board of Finance.
And the Board of Finance took it out and replaced it with three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I mean, because the.
The Board of Finance do that.
Education had that money to put into the capital fund.
Again, the Board of Education controls its expenditures. The Board of Education did not spend that money. The technical way that it should have happened is that money should have come back to the town and been put into the general fund at that point in time. Then the Board of Selectmen could have sat there and said to the Board of Finance with, you know, talking to the Board of Education and talking to the Board of Finance, said, hey, let's fund the uh capital fund with this overpayment. And then what we would have went to the town people with is, hey, listen, we're gonna put three hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the AES Capital Fund. We're not gonna tax you on it because we had a, we had an under budget amount from the prior year. There'll be no, no impact to the taxpayers in the current tax year. That's what should.
And you know why they have that money? It's because of the grant that they got. Otherwise, they would not have had that extra money. It was only because of the grant that Valerie was able to pull in.
Okay. Those are all positive things.
She'll probably stop doing grants.
What does that mean? Why would she stop doing grants?
For tons and tons of grants to be able to get the money, to have the extra to do the work on the building, because otherwise she doesn't get it.
So you're telling me that the superintendent of our schools is gonna stop applying for grants?
Well, she might.
The money, the money that is underspent is not going into her, into the AES.
If she feels the town votes it down and says, no, we're not gonna do that. If we're sending it to a town meeting, that can happen.
Anne, did Valerie tell you that she was gonna stop getting grants?
Well, she says, you know, what's my incentive to work on getting all these grants if the town isn't gonna let me put this extra money into a capital account?
We didn't say that. We said, all we wanted to do is make sure that everybody's on the same page. It does not ha, happen again next year. That the money is put in back into the general fund and then back into the.
Let me ask a general, let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. If AES is i- is is under budget by four hundred thousand this year, are are you expecting, and is the Board of Education expecting that that four hundred thousand dollars be put into the AES Capital Fund? Do you have that many projects that you're expecting to be accomplished? That's what you were under budget this year? Okay, so, listen, I don't even, it it, if to me, it doesn't even matter, like, we can go round and round. Round and round on this, but the issue is that it should go to a town meeting. And and Carol and Anne, if you need time to to review the documentation, I'm okay with that, because I understand that the opinion came today. So.
It should have come to what, when our referendum was, we should have had that information then.
It should have been voted on.
Then.
Yes.
Right.
If you need time, I I'm okay. I just would recommend we schedule a meeting, a town meeting for ourselves or a a Board of Selectmen special meeting next week to vote on it. You're on mute, Carol, if you're reading something from somebody.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
So I would say that the town has done basically the same thing at the end of the year. Uh, we certainly publicly funded a uh, vehicle for senior transportation from a completely different line item at the end of the year, because we had the surplus to do it. Um, as opposed to rolling it into the general fund. Now, that might have been under the half percent cap, um, which might mean technically the Board of Finance could approve that. Um, I don't know. It sounds like if we're gonna go in this direction, then we really need an ordinance that specifies exactly how this all goes down. Because, I mean, I I will admit that over the last six years, I've had a bunch of questions in my mind about exactly what the approval process is for capital expense. Does it go to CIP and then Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen? Does it just go CIP to Board of Finance? Does it go CIP, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance? So, I mean, I will admit, I don't really, and I should understand that procedure. Um, I did ask years ago, the, and gave the Board of Finance a draft policy of how I thought it should work, but there was never any final policy established on that, to my knowledge. So you know, maybe this really does need an ordinance, and we need to do something to clean this up, because I was certainly not under the impression of what Dennis's legal opinion was. Um, and that's an error on my part.
Uh, I I agree a hundred percent with you, Eric, in in that I was speaking to Mark Brinker over the weekend, and he and I are both honestly are unsure exactly with what the process should be. I mean, I have in I have a very common sense approach in that there's, there's there's assets of the town and there's. there's assets of the town and there's capital funds of the town that are are supposed to be uh, administered by the town administrator and the board of selectmen. And we're supposed to spend accordingly, uh, from those funds to upkeep the capital of the, the town. And he and Mark and I were having a conversation as to what is truly the role. Because I think we're getting to the point where we're having, um, we're attempting to have different boards take different roles and it's becoming confusion, con, uh, con, confused. And we need to sit there and outline it and have it in very detailed form and say, this is your role, this is our role, this is what a capital project is. Everybody's gotta follow the purchasing procedure and we really should go through and do all of that for the benefit of all future board of selectmens, all future board of finances and all future board of educations. Because it's the only way that we'll really be able to work together effectively. But, we're here today and, and I'm gonna go to Carol and Anne. We're here today. We've got to decide if we call a special meeting and we'll, you know, what we do. If we don't call a special meeting, I am telling you that I think we're or we, we will have, we could potentially have a problem. Because to me, that would mean a potential, uh, audit adjustment and then you have another problem. So, uh, I would recommend that we do it. That's my opinion. It may not be everybody else's opinion. Um, and I am telling you, I am not sitting there saying that I, the motion that I would make in the town meeting that I would make is that we come to vote on the movement of those funds to the AES capital fund. That's it. So.
And I just asked, Julian Hebert raised her hand and sent something on the screen. She's the vice chair of the board of finance. Can we?
There's no policies, Carol. There's no policies. The, the only policy there is, is what the charter has written. No one formally made a policy. Period.
Oh, there's a policy that was out there, Carol, if this is.
There was one out there, but it wasn't.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'll tell you, there was a written policy that the board of education and the board of finance jointly got together and attempted to write so that they could sit there and, and have, have what I would call control over the spending of unexpended funds that are in the AES capital fund. And to be really honest, that's not accept, that's not appropriate for me. I'm not, I'm not built for that because there's only one group in the town and it's the board of selectmen that sits there and has capital funds under its, under its purview. That's it. Nobody else has a capital fund under their purview. Not that, not Andover.
We tried getting together and discussing it, three boards. And the board of selectmen dropped the ball, I think, because they didn't just, didn't go through with it.
The board of, board of, uh, selectmen chose to vote on that policy. We were not going to approve that policy. You would have voted yes, Anne, and other people would have voted no.
Said we didn't have a policy. That evening, I remember him saying that. There was no policy. We didn't need a policy, it was his word.
Because what I
Didn't need a policy.
We have a capital improvement fund that the board of education is a member of. Everybody goes to the capital improvement fund to evaluate the necessary needs of the community. Balanced approach to who needs it. Is it the library? Is it the fire department? Is it the town? Is it the board of education? And then you choose how to spend the money that you have available. Okay, so what I'm gonna recommend is that we schedule a special meeting for next week with only one item on the agenda. And is it to schedule, uh, a town meeting or not to schedule a town meeting? Yeah, because I'm willing to give you the time because I believe that what we've discussed and what's been out there is, is, and Eric said something that he's not wrong. Um, you know, I know that we, we sat there on a prior, on the prior board of, of, of selectmen and we had extra money and we chose to sit there and spend money on a vehicle for senior transportation. And what we did was transfer funds to a, a line so that we could do senior transportation and we had the board of finance approve it. We didn't do it on our own. We did it with the board of finance. And, and that is accurate, Eric saying that. And Eric, what we really need to do is outline what is the true policy. But this is not forty thousand dollars. This is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And, and to me, it's something that's gonna happen next year and it's gonna happen in another year. And we're gonna all be coming back and, and as opposed to us fighting, what we should really do is outline what's the proper procedure, put it in an ordinance and be done with this and have no more confusion as to whose role is what and what we get done. So, but, that's not where I'm here today for. I'm here today for to say we really need a town meeting to approve that transfer so that we don't have someone go back and say, really, that should be in the general fund. I would ask Carol and, and Anne specifically, if you want time to read those documents and to, to form a better opinion and get, and Anne to get with your, your, your group to sit there and make sure that the board of education and how they perceive what the attempt to get done is, no problem. Let's have a meeting next week, one item on an agenda, nothing else. Either we schedule a, a town meeting or we don't. That acceptable to everybody? Can we schedule it tonight? Okay.
So, what day would you schedule the special meeting?
Um, let's look at, oh, there's, no, the special meeting? That's a different thing. It can only, we'd have to do it two weeks out. I mean.
No, no, I mean for the board of selection for us next week is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, we gotta look at our calendar, right? To make sure that we're not on somebody else's schedule.
Well, the nineteenth, Thursday is Juneteenth, so that's out. Um, if you want me present.
How about we do it? How about we do it? Does anybody have a problem doing it Friday, seven o'clock, ten minute meeting? It gives you four days to sit there and go through this.
This Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Thirteenth?
Thirteen, okay.
Does, does, Jeff, do you have a problem with that?
Yeah, we have a conflict, so.
Listen, there's nothing on Thursday, the twelfth. Anybody? Conflict?
Um.
We have two days. There's three days to sit there and get it done.
I don't have a conflict if it's seven or later.
Yep, seven o'clock. We, we said, we made an agreement that we wouldn't have any meetings before seven. Every once in a while, we break our own vow, but, seven o'clock, Thursday, the twelfth.
Well, we have DTC meeting that night, but would this meeting be very short then?
Very short. I would hope, Anne, I'm hoping all our meetings are really short. This one is longer than I would have expected. I mean, uh, listen, seven to seven fifteen, that would be the hope. Everybody would have their questions. Everybody knows how they're gonna vote. You're gonna sit there and you're, we're gonna do it and move on. I mean, I'd vote tonight, but I understand that everybody wants to read that and, and feel feel that they understand what the town attorney wrote and that they get input from all the people that they wanna get input from.
Well, I'm glad you're having it this week because I'll be away next week and so I'll be there to answer questions. I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I always like to get feedback on what I do.
All right, so, does anybody, so we, can we schedule it for the twelfth? Is that okay? So, I'll make a motion that we schedule a special meeting for June twelfth to, uh, discuss the scheduling of a special town meeting for the AES capital fund.
Second.
Second, Carol Lee. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five, nothing. Okay. Let's move on to, uh, nine B food truck discussion. We had, um, a resident give us some information related to the food truck. Eric, before we get started, your input on this?
Uh, so, we have a resident that is looking at the possibility of uh, finding some locations in town where they would be allowed to put a food truck. They made the initial suggestion and were asked whether they would be allowed to park the food truck down near the recreational fields during games. I said that's a board of selectmen issue, but as long as they're insured, I don't have a problem with that personally. I think that's a reasonable request. I also said that the town has one other property where we've specifically allowed a food truck to be parked before. That is the old small commuter lot next to Over and Over. Um, and the third location that maybe should be considered is parking it along the rail trail on one of the town properties. If you remember when we purchased the property from the Merritt family. We did that in such a way that we purchased some of the parcels with open space funds and the rest donated so that those ones that were donated were available for commercial use. So, there is an existing curb cut on Route Six, so you could potentially allow the use of a food truck near the rail trail right by the, the underpass on the Route Six. Those were the three, I thought, off the top of my head. Um, but we didn't really have any sort of food truck form. Um, so I nicked the one from the Andover's farmer's market, changed it around a little bit and presented that to you also. It would need to go to legal review if this is something you wanted to consider. But I at least wanted to put enough information before you so that you could have a discussion. And the, uh, person that was trying to do it uh, was on, I don't see them on listed, uh, anymore, unfortunately.
That, that's, E- Eric, I, I think it's something that, uh, I would recommend that we evaluate. I also know that they said that they would potentially be willing to compensate the town. I think you should negotiate all of those factors and everything else and bring it back to the board at a future meeting.
I think we could charge a fee for that if they're using because when uh, Linda and Dave were using the commuter lot that Over and Over uses, there was a rental fee that we charged for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did look for that information, but that's, at least from what I can find, that, that predates our shared server, so I don't have that information on what fees. I'm happy to entertain whatever fees the board feels are appropriate.
Okay, can we look in, can you look into other towns and what they potentially would do? Um, but yes, i- it's something we should entertain and we should sit there and see if it's, uh, it's viable. I mean, I'd also like to understand that Eastern Health doesn't cause any problems or that it would, uh, be appropriate for their, their needs. I know she sat there and said she was gonna get all the licensing and all the requirements and get all that done, but let's just make sure that it's not something that we become, it becomes problematic for us.
Right, we would require Eastern Highlands Health District to, uh, give a temporary food service permit, um, and that they be insured. But today, there's now a, a law that says, uh, health districts have to offer reciprocity for food trucks. So, instead of, uh, getting your food truck approved in each individual health district throughout the state, I think you can get it done in one and ask for reciprocity in the other. Um, but, food trucks are not an issue with Eastern Highlands Health District. I know that. I sit on the board, so I don't see that being an objection.
All right, so let's, let's have this on the agenda for next month and sit there and see if we can get that negotiated and laid out so that the individual can buy their truck. Okay, um, there was a, a, a significant amount of information on the solid waste discussion, the SF, SS, SMMR two. Um, Eric, what's the, what is the specifics that you want us to address related to that? Is, do we
So, the
transfer station or not, or?
The, the real question you have to ask is, would you as a board continue, consider going to a pay as you throw mechanism for the transfer station? With all the complications that entails, or keep the basic form that we're running the transportation station at now or transfer station, which is just an annual flat fifty dollar fee um, to anybody that wants to use it and not limit, limit the types of waste, but not the quantities of waste. Because the state has a series of grant programs and that we could tap into, but they all require as a core of doing it that you adopt the pay as you throw model. Um, I honestly don't think that's really practical for the town. I would like to consider some of the other parts of the grant program, but you can't do one without the other. So, my question for you is, is that something you would consider and be willing to take the public feedback? Um, which will probably not be happy with that. Um, and the logistical issues of figuring out how to adopt a pay as you throw model for the transfer station.
I'm just sitting there telling you, we, we are not in a position to logistically accomplish that. Forget all of the other things that would go on with it, like, I mean, we don't even have an internet at the transfer station, so. I mean, if you were even thinking about doing it, you'd have to sit there and outline how you would want to execute it and then we'd have to get public feedback to sit there and say, would you even consider doing it without killing us?
Right.
Right? Okay, so, I don't really feel like getting beat up any more than I need to. I know Carol doesn't, right, Carol?
No, and I just think we would have to reset, redesign the transfer station because the way the hut is where the guys are, you know, if you look at Columbia, it's right there when you pull in and they look at what you have. So, I just think that the sticker fee is enough. If we have to go up a little bit, that's one thing, but I think sticker fee is enough.
So, that'd have to be like bags, certain bags that you use, or how would that even?
There are different ways of doing that. The one way is, um, you just say, okay, your annual fee is fifty dollars. For that, you get the equivalent of two household garbage bags. Um, so you get one hundred special garbage bags every year. Um, and when you've exceeded that limit, then you have to pay, you have to buy the bags from somewhere. Pick a retailer and down. Make them buy it from Over and Over or the Dollar General or, or some other town resident. So, that's one possibility. Uh, the second possibility is some sort of scale mechanism, but that's harder to implement in the town of Andover, so. You know, I, I'm, I like the concept, but I struggle to see how we can practically do that in the town of Andover. The only reason why I even considered and was willing to sit through all the, uh, PowerPoint presentations, um, you know, and talk to the people that are running this program is I think the food scrap diversion could be viable at some point. It might be worthwhile because mostly, uh, you know, statewide, they figure somewhere about twenty-two percent of everything that gets thrown out in solid waste. So, not bulky waste, but just regular household garbage is food scraps. And if you can take that out of the waste stream somehow, that means you're taking an awful lot less to the incinerator and you're taking a lot less to the, the landfill. So, I can see some value in it. I just, in my head, I don't understand how this project could work in Andover. But, the way this program is, if we signed up for it, the first six months is just them figuring out whether this could even be implemented in Andover. But I also don't wanna make, do that unless we're serious about thinking about doing it. That's probably a long-winded way to say, I'm not really in favor of this.
Well, the only way we'd ever, I mean, the only way I think we would consider it is if it is financially appropriate for the town of Andover and we can execute it logistically. So, you'd have to, you'd have to give us those two things. Like, here's what the grant funding would do for us. Because listen, what does, what does the sticker fee pay for our transfer station cost? listen, what does, what does the sticker fee pay for our transfer station cost thirty percent?
No, around twenty percent today.
So it's less, so twenty percent. So the sticker fee is twenty percent of the total cost of operating the transfer station.
Yeah, twenty to twenty-five percent.
Okay, so if you came back to the board and sat there and said the grants and how we would run this program would fund sixty percent of the cost of the transfer station, then we may have an appetite to sit there and pursue it. Because there's some cost savings to the town. Um, but.
Well, it wouldn't be cost savings to the town. We would just say we are putting on more of the cost of the transfer station on the people who use the transfer station the most. That's what this would end up doing in the long term.
Correct, but I'm assuming that some of the grant funding would also supplement the dollars that we currently deal with. So it has to be return on investment. We have to understand it. And it's a little bit more than just reading their document to sit there and see what would be up, Eric. We'd have to come up with a plan to say, okay, the hundred bags cost fifty dollars and then everything above and beyond the fifty bags is X and this is how you fund it. And do we get any grant funding on top of that? And so that there would be savings if the program generated more than twenty percent of the, the over, like could could uh, could supplement what we're currently getting from the transfer sticker fees. But honestly, for this coming year, it's just the transfer sticker fee as far as I'm concerned, because I think we'd kill ourselves if we tried to implement it. It would be for the following year if we could get it done. So. Anybody else have any issues related to that? I think it's a great idea. I just think it'd be really hard to implement. And we'd have to get an infrastructure that could handle it. Anybody else with any other questions for that item? Okay, nine E Long Hill uh, Bridge update in the Lake Road. We talked about these, but.
Yeah. I guess that uh, you have everything um, other than uh, I will send out the seventy percent design uh, submission meeting. There will be at the end of June at some point there, or beginning of July, there will be what's called the Plans in Hand meeting. That is, they've sent out to all the relevant uh, state agencies as well as the utility companies, the draft plans, including utility relocation, what the bridge is gonna look like. Um, and there will be an onsite meeting that you are all uh, more than welcome to attend. Um, to discuss any of the issues that any of the agencies that have regulatory authority over this. And there are many um, have with it prior to getting to the ninety percent plan stage. But the intention uh, at this point is somewhere about the middle of August to have the final uh, design uh, draft meeting um, with the uh, Connecticut DOT. Um, bid opening or advertising for both the construction inspection and the construction firm to take place somewhere in early September. Open bid, bid openings in October with the plan of having contract in, in place for both uh, construction inspection as well as the contracting firm by the middle of December. Um, scheduled for a April one start date on the bridge.
Okay, anybody have any questions related to the bridges? Okay, we had nine F Trinity Solar um, um, permit application.
Correct.
I know. I'll make a motion that we approve. And what was the individual's name that was on that permit, Eric?
I don't know.
Aiden Ford.
Aiden Ford. Alright, so I make a motion that we cancel all Trinity Solar sales permit applications that are currently exist and approve the Trinity Solar sales permit uh, specifically related to Aiden Ford.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this item? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we're on to item ten, approval of the meeting minutes from five, the regular meeting from five twelve twenty twenty-five.
I would like to amend the minutes to note that the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to have the town clerk on the ballot in November.
I'll second that, cuz I know that we did.
Thank you.
All right. All those uh, in favor of approving the minutes with the above men or the the adjustment to the vote for the town clerk on the ballot? Aye.
Aye.
I have nothing. Okay, uh, Treasurer's Report. It starts on page sixty-seven of our packet. Anybody have any specific questions related to the Treasurer's Report? Eric, the one thing is, and I didn't see it in here, but do you have a town aid road uh, balance update for us?
Uh, I can provide you one. The one I have is probably a couple of months old.
Okay, if you can do that, cuz it's, it's eleven C. I'd like to know what's left in that account.
We used to have an update every month for that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions related to um, the town budget? And, and Eric, we may as well talk about it. Um, where do you think we're gonna be related to the end of the year?
Uh, we're going to be underspent to some extent on the town budget. And we will be slightly over in total collections. So I know we'll be in the black. I just, I don't wanna give you an estimate for how far in the black. Um, the one thing I was holding out and worried on was the Resident Trooper. The bill, we did get the bill for that already. It is six or seven thousand less than the budget. So we're in good shape there. Um, so I don't see any major problems in the budget overall.
So the resident state trooper came in at thirty-two thousand dollars for the year? That's good.
Around thirty-three thousand.
Yeah. Thirty-three. Okay, and so uh, if you can keep the residents informed as to where we end up related to our spending in, in next month, let's have a, a better uh, understanding of where we're gonna end up being, but you said our revenue collection is better. Is that from collect, tax collections or is that from state funding? Where, where are you at with that one?
Um, so overall tax collection, we've gotten all the state money we expected. Um, we've done better than we've done in years past with collections uh, from the collection of back taxes owed by Kate. Um, we've done better than we've done in the past. So we're up a little bit on that overall where we seem to be right where we should.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have any other questions related to the Treasurer's Report?
Carol's got her end up.
No, oh, I accidentally did it. I don't even know why I have that. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um. All right, we'll move on to uh, item twelve, the Tax Collector's Report. So. She's ninety-nine percent collected on real estate, ninety-eight percent on personal property, ninety-five percent on motor vehicles and ninety-one percent on the supplemental, I believe. So there's still a total due of a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for the current year. That not what's not due for the prior years. But.
But if you remember, the way we budget this, which admittedly is a little screwy, but it works out most years, is that we assume we're gonna collect a hundred percent of the taxes across the board in the correct year. But we don't figure on any uh, you know, motor vehicle supplemental. Cuz usually the amount we collect in the motor vehicle supplemental works out to about the same amount as uh, what we don't collect in taxes.
The twenty twenty-three uncollected balance is, is much higher than this year. So, so Kate obviously did a good job collecting this year. So she's down seventy thousand dollars from the prior year. Which means she did a poor job in twenty twenty-three and a much better job in twenty twenty-four.
She is getting better.
Okay.
Learning the job.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions for the Tax Collector? Report? No, okay. Um, there is a, an update on the um, tax sale and the demands on that. Um. When is that all supposed to be finalized, Eric? And when is there a date set for the potential tax sale?
Uh, I think it's sometime in July. But I, I don't have the, the date.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I know the, the liens have all been leased. We've gotten a bunch of them to pay off. Um, my understanding is that the Barnett property has just come off the list uh, that Adam Cohen had, which is, which is, I'm assuming means he got paid for that. Um, and we're just, cuz that property did sell. Um, so I'm assuming he's already gotten paid for that and he just hasn't reimbursed the town yet. So we're down to really, you know, like three big properties in the the uh, tax sale. In my understanding also is that the Fitch Family Farm has sold that property, or is it, it's at least under contract? So there's an understanding that we should get that one too. So there's only gonna be a couple left in the tax sale by the time it gets to that point.
Okay, good news. All right, please make sure that uh, at, at the next meeting, you give us the date of the sale so that we can at least announce it to the residents at least at our meeting. Uh, page seventy-six, there's a tax refund for the uh, month of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents for Toyota Lease Trust. Related to a certificate of correction. So I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refund in, in the total uh, in the, in the total of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents to the Toyota Lease Trust.
Second.
Carol seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five, nothing. Okay.
Can I just tell you the tax sale is July sixteenth at one P M.
July sixteenth, one P M. Thank you. Um, there are various departmental reports that were provided to us. Um, anybody have any questions related to any of them? There was one submitted by Haley Proto from the Community Center. There was one provided by the Assessor's Office. State Police. Building Department, Public Works.
So if you have questions for Haley, she is still on this meeting. So I'm sure she would be happy to answer them.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay. So let's move on to item fourteen, correspondence, the correspondence and the CROG summary, Eric.
Uh, let me get down to that. So I put CROG summary of what House Bill five double O two would do. Um, in, so you could kinda understand the effects on the town of Andover. As I said before, it does look like the governor is pulling back from signing it in the existing form. Um, but I don't know whether they will or they won't. Obviously, it's getting lobbied pretty hard from both sides. Um, it does make a series of changes that would be interesting for the town of Andover. The first thing it does is it allows mobile homes in every zone, every residential zone in the town of Andover. Um, so Jeff, if you wanted to tear your home down and put a single wide uh, on the foundation instead, you'd be allowed to do it once this regulation puts it. Um, unlikely anybody would do it given the cost of land. But not uh, impossible to think of. The other thing it does is it allows middle housing um, on anything that is currently zoned, commercial or industrial. Middle housing is designed as up to a nine apartment, uh, apartment unit um, on a piece of property. And as you know, since we zone down to a half acre in the commercial and industrial zone, that would be a pretty intense use on a piece of property. Um, it also allows them to build it without any parking at all, which is uh, a little scary. It's not too likely that in Andover, somebody would try to build an apartment complex and not have any parking. But legally, the zoning commission would not be able to in, you know, do any parking regs. Um. The other thing that's gonna happen is the town is gonna have to uh, draft a priority affordable housing plan. Um, you know, which is gonna take some time and may extend um, the existing plan of conservation and development effort out a little bit because it's, it's part of, it will be part of the P O C D. Um, you know, and it's, it's, it's gonna take quite a bit of planning effort to uh, to do this, number one. And we're also gonna have to have uh, some fairly good legal review of our zoning regulations. Because there are a lot of changes and we need, we would then need to make our town zoning rules comply with state law. So something that happens every year, just usually not as drastic as this. Um, the second thing is, I put in the packet uh, several months ago, I asked you for permission to reply to the state that we'd be happy to have them replace all our stop signs with new stop signs. This is the project authorization letter that has to be signed by the first selectman, but since you all uh, as a board are the local traffic authority collectively, I, I wanted to put it in the packet so that you knew. Um, the board already kinda said, go ahead with this. But now Jeff technically needs to sign it to get the project rolling. So that's the second piece of correspondence that's in there.
Yeah. Anybody have any other questions for? Okay, we'll move on to public speak. Diane Grunier.
Yep, here I am. Thank you. Um, another, another good me- meeting. You have uh, lo- lots of information there, so uh, thank you. Um, my question is, um, did, for the Andover's finest, did somebody, I assume you did, keep the old list from a couple of years ago of all the ones that were nominated? Or are we gonna have to start from scratch and renominate people?
So it's three people, isn't there?
No, 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 no. Those are the three people that we selected. There were other people nominated. We'll make sure that we get that information and we'll, we should post that or I don't wanna post it, but we'll make sure we have it available.
Okay, I, I do have that list if uh, you don't have it.
Okay.
So just so you know that, um, then that's it. Again, good meeting, guys. Thank you very much for all you do.
Right, Tiss Cross?
I'm all set. Thank you, Jeff.
Jay Tuttle?
All set, Jeff. Thanks.
Haley Proto?
Thank you. I'm good over here.
Thank you. Marcy Minor?
Hi, there's, there's so many things that I have questions about. Um. One is uh, that I was nominated for the Hiring Committee, but no one else. But no one else was, so I'm a little confused. About that, maybe if there's somebody from the. Com- uh. Selectmen's persons group that I could. Communicate with, I don't know who that would be, but uh, we could probably have a conversation about that later.
Sure, you can talk to Carol, but there's five members of, there are four members of committee right now, Marcy, myself, Carol Lee. Uh, Amory Daigle and yourself.
Okay, all right, awesome. Um, the other thing was. The, it's really sad that we have. Uh, two good people that are leaving just this month, and um. I think that I wonder if we should consider. Uh, some kind of. A resource person or something in the town, I know that's a. Probably a whole subject, but. Uh, I think it's something we should probably think about. Um, something that I don't think we have in the town, and we probably should. Consider something like that, so. Anyway, that's it, and thank you so much, you guys really uh, have. A lot to work on and have done in this meeting alone, so thank you.
Valerie Bruno.
Hi, thank you. Um, so first of all, I do want to clear up, um, you know, what what Anne Kremay had said about the grants. Um, yes, I have publicly said at the Board of Finance meeting, when we were originally speaking about the. Agreement between the Board and Finance and the Board of Ed. That that certainly, the establishment of that account certainly would allow us to, moving forward, to um. See that as an incentive not to buy things at the end of the year. That the Board of Education had done in the past, so I certainly would still pursue grants. I don't want anyone to think that I wouldn't. Um, with that said, I I I'm a little, um. I don't know, I I don't know what the right word is here. Uh, I guess I feel as though things are, you know, do as we say, not as we do. Um, you know, Eric did mention that we do have past protocol that's been done on the town side where. These things have absolutely not been adhered to, so. I understand the idea of maybe moving forward, making sure that. Things are done a little bit differently. Um, I don't agree they've been done against the charter, but I agree that moving forward, par- perhaps there needs to be a conversation. Um, I'm a little suspect about the rushing of this now, wanting a town meeting to take place after the last day of school. When perhaps we'd have less people there to um, appear and and to listen. I also have um, one more thing, and that is that. Um, the budget season just ended, and we have a twenty-five, twenty-six budget established for next year. The information that was given to the townspeople was dependent upon, and and they were told. This is what the school has available to it, this is its two percent non-lapsing account, this is the capital funding. And decisions were made and votes were issued at the first referendum and at the second referendum. To establish a twenty-five, twenty-six budget. For the school based on those numbers, and I I do believe that the result of that um, vote would have been very different. If in fact, this had been brought up prior to, so I do think that there would have to be a legal review. About the um. Accuracy of the budget moving forward if this were to change, because this is what the people were told, this is what they were presented. At referendum as the facts behind what the school has available to it moving forward. And again, um, the school board does have a different attorney, the school board has Shipman and Goodwin, and I believe that we should be allowed to. Um, have the opinion of the town's attorney. Um, rebutted by the opinion of the Board of Education's attorney. Uh, prior to any of this, we were not in receipt of any of this information, and I don't believe that the whole Board of Finance was either, so. You know, I understand moving forward, but I don't understand the sense of urgency and wanting this addressed right now, after the audit has officially been filed. After the budget for next year has been established, I do believe that there's merit to saying. Because the town has also done things um, that you believe were done in the wrong way. Like the senior center not going to a town vote either, that maybe we should say it's June of twenty twenty-five right now, and moving forward. We'd like to talk about the future rather than the past as it pertains solely to the school, thank you.
Kimberly Person.
Uh, nothing right now, thank you.
Uh, Leanne Hutchinson?
Nothing, thank you.
Joanne Hebert?
Yes, I'd like to um, just say a couple comments, um. I guess I'll I'll follow with what happened tonight with um. You know, what the superintendent was just talking about, because. You made a lot of references and a lot was brought up about the Board of Finance or these things happening, or we don't want this to happen again. First of all, we want to make sure, or at least I do, because I will always publicly speak, unlike people that like to run around behind closed doors and maybe give some comments. But when I'm asked, you're going to hear it from me. And and I don't mind commenting public, and I'm always gonna be professional, I'm always gonna. Treat people with respect that maybe don't show me the same class and respect. Um, so. My comment there was. We want things to go the right way. You didn't acknowledge that there was a whole year. Of two people from each of the boards trying to come up with a three-board agreement. You know, drafting it and having things go back and forth. Because as the superintendent had mentioned, in the past, it did seem like. There is a spending frenzy going on that all schools do, I work in a school. It's what you want to do, the town has allotted you money, you want to spend it in the most correct way. So I think the thought at that time was because there were so many upcoming projects. And I wasn't at the genesis of any of this, I just have a really good memory, I go to a lot of meetings, I speak the truth. I speak every version, and I'm going to report the facts, not just what I want out there. So there was a committee put together of Shannon Loudon and Rob England. Who had spent a lot of time trying to craft an agreement. And when it had gotten some board approval, it went to the Board of Selectmen. You know, for some thoughts on it. And I'm not gonna speak for you, Mr. Maguire, but I'm pretty sure you were the one that didn't want to have any part of it. So again, treating you with respect, you kind of said you didn't, you know, I'd have to look back, I don't want to quote anybody. But there was some kind of agreement trying to be made so that maybe. Um, you know, what is a capital expenditure, what is this, what is that? So there was a lot of time and effort put into it, this wasn't just a, let's. You know, transfer this over, it was a really concerted effort. To get all three boards to work together, and then to, you know, first establish the capital fund for AES. And then fund it appropriately. So there were two different things, I think there was money left from one audit or one. One year where money was transferred in, I don't. I haven't had the time in my personal and professional life to go through this audit, but you bet I will before we meet on it. Um, I was on the meeting tonight, I had my hand politely raised multiple times. You clearly weren't gonna call on me to get any facts from me because you did not want that to happen. And that's okay, I can accept that, but I was there to just give you a couple things, um. You know, that you were saying to kind of maybe correct the the way it was going. However it goes, we want the town to spend the money they want. I'm the one always making suggestions for budget cuts. I'm the one that will speak up in public and put my face behind it, whether I'm agreed with or not. So there's no problem going to however we want to do this, but we were trying to get all of the three boards together. Um, you know, and that's where this came from. The other thing I do want to address tonight that. I get the feeling that when I made my public comment about Jay Tuttle. Leaving earlier, it was more of a surprise. You know, and I was stating from going to meetings and listening to him. That I was just surprised that he resigned because it seemed like he wanted to stay with the town. Um, you know, you right away when I was done and Jay, you went right to Jay right away, and then you said, well, good thing you didn't hear that. I think if people listened to my comments, they were respectful. I was surprised that he was leaving. But now that Jay had a moment to speak for himself, I applaud him. No one wants stress. No one, when everybody gets towards retirement age, we all want things to calm down for ourselves. We all want to have a simpler life or stress-free or whatever, so he was able. To explain why he's leaving. So I'm glad I heard that, so I don't want it said anywhere that I said anything negative about him. Everyone has praised the work he does. We're glad to have had him, but if he needs to leave because this job is too stressful, that's the time to leave. So I just wanted to say that because I did not appreciate. Kind of the connotation that I might have said a negative comment, thank you.
Shannon Loudon?
Good evening. Um. I think there are two major problems. With now trying to proceed with a town meeting. Regarding the Board of Ed being allowed to transfer money into the AES capital fund. First of all, contrary to a number of statements tonight, there is a joint policy. That was enacted by both the Board of Finance. And the Board of Education earlier this year. The Board of Selectmen chose not to be a part of it. And it is in the nature. Of the Board of Education's being allowed to transfer unexpended funds into our non-lapsing account. I haven't seen Dennis's opinion, I'll look forward to seeing that, but. If there's a statement that the Board of Ed is not allowed to transfer money. Into its own capital fund that was created. By the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. For the purpose of allowing us. To save money. Towards future capital expenditures, I I'm incredulous as to what the purpose was. Secondly, a- as was stated by Valerie very eloquently. Earlier, um, I'll just get down to it and say. We've just, the town has just approved a budget. That was based on understandings of funds that would be available. To be used by the Board of Education for capital expenditures. And if the Board of Ed had known that these funds would not be available, our proposed budget would have been increased by the four hundred thousand dollars. I think you're gonna have a legal issue. If there is a town meeting that now. Disapproves of the money on which. Budgets were now. Put forward to the town and passed by referendum. And I don't think that's something that's in the town's interest. Thanks.
Did I miss anyone?
I just have a question, I didn't know where to ask this.
Sure.
Can we? Please get our agendas and packets a week before rather than. On Thursday. Um. A lot of times they're closer to the end of the day. It's. It's not really fair that we don't have time to research things and things get pushed on to another meeting or forgotten about because. We have questions, and some of these questions. If we had this. Ahead of time. Probably could have been answered and. You know, things resolve. Without being pushed on to our next meeting. So I'm just asking that we get. The agendas. A week before, I'd be happy to help with the agendas, help with the packets, I just think. That it's not fair that we're asked to vote on things when. We don't have the information, and this happens quite a bit. That's all.
Okay.
Can I put one thing in there? I mean, we've we've, this has been debated a bunch of times, and. I do understand the point. The problem is always if you back the agenda up one full me- week. Twenty-five percent of the information that comes in that month that you really need to act on. You don't have. So what was happening in the past was we were putting out the the packet earlier. And then I was giving core dumps every two days of more stuff. And I got kind of reamed at for the board for doing that. For presenting stuff after the packet went out. So. If you want to go to two meetings a month. So you shorten up the time you would have to wait. Um, for everything that missed that one week window, that's okay. But if you're gonna hold it a month apart for meetings. You really need that full month of information. Because if not, that everything that comes in that that. Right that week before the meeting, you're waiting five weeks for a decision on. And that's the difficult part.
Carol, maybe.
We do have add and delete. Agenda items, and as long as it's not something. Um. Major. We could add that, and you can always change the agenda. Right up to Thursday at three P M and add something new. But some of these things. We could have already done the research and. You know, come to a decision.
If we can come to some resolution of of working back and forth with the agenda in advance. So that the packet can be created, I think that would make more sense, so we email back and forth on agenda items, so everybody can see it, and if you have questions. You can ask the questions for the individuals that want to put that on there.
Right, and if we have an item we need to add. We can talk between the five of us back and forth.
By email.
To to get. These agenda items added.
No problem, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, I feel like. If there's seventy-five percent of the packet is ready a week ahead. Send that out. And then. We can look at all that stuff, and if so, if there's another twenty-five percent that has to be sent out. On the Friday, Thursday afternoon before maybe. Uh, do that, but at least we have less at the last minute. It would really be helpful.
Okay. Anything else, uh, and did I miss anyone in public speak? Dennis O'Brien, I know you're there, do you want to say anything? Okay, good.
Could I just? Interject one thing, um. To Shannon Loudon's point. Um. Mark Brinker, when he gave the budget. Uh, meeting and discussed town capital, one of the slides clearly stated. That they funded three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars into the AES capital from prior budget surplus. So I think he certainly did announce at the public, public meeting. That the Board of Finance had done that. Not saying it was correct or the procedure was correct or anything, but the public was informed that they did that at the budget meeting.
Okay. Um. Anything else?
Can I just ask, and was that dollar amount shown? On that budget line? Eric?
It wasn't on a budget line.
No, no, but was it shown, does? Is the AES capital fund, or what? What is it, what is the title of that fund, AES capital?
Eric, why don't you just get us the 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 PowerPoint that was presented and send it out to all the members?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Five, nothing. All right, thank you.
Good night.
Night.